Okay, well, welcome to this eighteenth meeting for fiscal year eighteen of the Milton Planning Board. We're going to introduce ourselves. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman.
April Lamro, member.
Julia Gatton, clerk.
Phil Clark, planning director.
Lauren Masser, assistant town planner.
Denny Swenson, member.
Cheryl Togayes, member.
And Brian?
Yes, I'm here, Brian Furz, member.
All right, he's on the telephone. Now, we're going to meet again next week, on the fifteenth. Well, that's good. And then we're going to not meet again until April twelfth. Shall we approve the minutes of January second and twenty-fourth? Has everyone read those? They've been kicking around for a while.
January second, I have it approved.
Okay, so the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, February twenty-second.
I haven't read those.
Did I get that sentence in that I wanted on the twenty-fourth? I'm ready to sign off if I can.
What does it say?
It says, yeah, okay. I'm now signing.
You're going to put that, you know what the sentence is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I put it in. She signed it.
Okay, thank you. And I move to approve January twenty-fourth meeting minute.
Okay.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we'll do the February twenty-second at the next meeting. Now, we're going to do Citizen Speak. And Citizen Speak is an opportunity for people to talk to issues, but not to discuss people and not to make personal remarks. It's to discuss issues. So if anyone would like to discuss an issue at Citizen Speak, they're welcome to do so. Yes, sir.
I'm Phil Drohning, twenty-three Parkwood Drive. I wanted to say that I support a meaningful restoration of the tree line along Hillside Street at Parkwood Drive. You know, the trees got cut down, I'm not exactly sure how, within the town right-of-way. And I'm hoping that this body will encourage the builder to replace tree for tree after removing the stumps and repairing, flattening the land, I don't know how to say it, excavating the land. I think what has been created there is sort of an eyesore. And Hillside Street by itself is very attractive generally, but now that the trees have been cut, the stumps have been left, it really has become an eyesore. I hope that this board will do everything in its power to ensure that the tree line is restored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other people for Citizen Speak. All right, we've got the tree warden here. And why don't we discuss this?
Is there a representative of the?
Violator here?
Yes.
You're the violator?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we'll put a seat between us. I wish I could see you better. Would you like me to make a statement first?
Well, I don't know. I mean, either you or, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name's John Keneely. I own property at eighth Parkwood Drive.
Why don't you explain what happened?
Can I do that first?
You're better to explain what happened.
I'll explain it first. All right. Mr. Keneely had a, has bought the lot on the corner of Parkwood and Hillside. When he bought the land, obviously it was surveyed, there was a plan for a new house. He submitted the plan to the building department for the house, for the septic system with the Board of Health. And he started doing his clearing of the land before he actually knew what he had. One of the applications that he filed for was a driveway permit. In the driveway permit, I actually looked at it, saw that the property line was inboard of where the trees had been taken down. I actually called Mr. Keneely and asked him what the deal was, why the trees had already come down, and made the statement that it's a nineteen-foot swath in one point, and I don't know exactly what it goes to the other end, seventeen feet maybe, that those are trees belonging to the town. At which point, I notified Branch. Branch was on vacation. Branch wrote back immediately.
And Branch is the tree warden?
Thank you very much. Branch Lane is the tree warden. Branch wrote back that Mr. Keneely is supposed to have his surveyor come back and mark the property line, which he did. He staked out where the property line is, there's an orange line that goes down. The second part of Branch's comment was that no stumps be removed from the town's portion of the land, so that we could go back, look at the stump itself, figure out, one, how big it was, two, how many there were. When Branch came back, Branch and I have since met on the site. We've actually talked to Mr. Keneely, and Mr. Keneely can give his own comment from this point.
Aye. So when I cleared all the trees, I thought the stone wall was my boundary. So we cleared everything, and then we found out afterwards that part of it belonged to the town. I'm willing to push everything back and more, if you want it, for what was there, for what I took down, because honestly, if I knew it wasn't mine, it never would have been touched. I live in the town, my kids go to school here, I'm part of Milton, and I know a lot of people up around that area where I've done work for them and everything over the years. So I really, I know what, everything on my side probably moved too fast, and things got knocked before they shouldn't have got knocked. And I take full responsibility for the whole thing up there.
Were you misled by anyone? Did you ask people in the town what you could do or not do?
No, not really.
You just did it.
I've never bought a lot before. I've always done houses, but never bought actually a lot of land that I thought was, I actually thought it was, the whole thing was mine. I left one tree, there was a good tree in the middle of it, which is, but I know I shouldn't have. I don't touch them.
Not that it, not that it's an excuse, but in that particular neighborhood, the town's right-of-way meanders back and forth across different people's properties. There's a house closer up to Randolph Ave that has thirty-five feet behind the stone wall, belongs to the town. If you drove by, you'd think it was that guy's front lawn. It's not. Thirty-five feet of it belongs to the town. By the time you get up here, it goes nineteen feet on the other side of the street. So the lines on a lot of the older streets in town, just because you see a stone wall doesn't mean that's the bound. It could be that the wall is inside your property line, it could be the property line, or it could be outside the property line.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the tree warden?
Okay. When I first saw this, I was shocked at what happened over there on Hillside Street on a scenic road. The property had a plot plan which showed clearly a property line that was twenty feet from where the town road extended onto beyond the wall. So first of all, I'm just amazed that that could have even happened. When Bill and I went out there, he's taken account of thirty-seven trees that have four-inch plus caliber. You know, just using as a conservative estimate, there were thirty-five to north of seventy thousand worth of trees removed over there, if you looked at their actual value. Those were the four-inch. In addition, one of our tree committee members had it, did an inventory, and found that there were about thirty-five under four-inch trees removed over there. So I guess the short of it was, we're stuck now. We got a significant problem to deal with over there. And I would sincerely love to keep this out of the court system, because there's a hell of a lot of money involved to put this back the way it was before. And it's virtually impossible to replace eight, twelve, seventeen-inch trees. I'm going to suggest that the applicant come before the shade tree advisory committee with his landscape architect and see what they can put together for a plan to try to remediate this. But otherwise, I don't see any way beyond coming to a final resolution about how to put that property back to near its original state, that we're going to do that without a significant suit on our hands to reclaim that, the amount of money that's going to require to do that. So those are my suggestions, to get his landscape architect before the shade tree advisory committee, and hopefully we can work out something that's going to remediate that property.
And of course, since he should have requested a scenic road hearing before removing any trees over four inches, in fact, before removing any trees, he probably should also, there also probably should be a scenic road application at the same time. We can do it in tandem.
That would be fine. He has to come back before you folks anyway, right?
It's my belief he does, yes.
So if that's the case, that would be fine with me. And hopefully, we could be working on this in the meantime.
Right. Let's see what the board has to say, and then we'll, we can take a few questions from the floor if they have any question.
I just wanted to kind of, for the public's learning and your learning and my learning, I looked up the scenic bylaw and some other, and the scenic way, you're required to go before the planning board for a public hearing. But you are also required to notify the tree warden, conservation commission, and the shade tree committee. Is that right? The shade tree committee as well? Are they in the loop?
No.
They're not in the loop?
But they have their own jurisdiction.
Right, right. And because it's within the setback, the trees are town trees, they're town property, if you will. So that's why. So you happen to hit upon everything with this area. So I just wanted the public to learn from this as well as you have, because it's an expensive mistake. So those are the areas that I would love to hear from. I'd love to hear from the historic commission if you're here tonight. And I just wanted the public to understand that they don't want to find themselves in your shoes, that these are something that we care about in town. One of the things I've learned from the shade tree committee is they put up about, Christine can correct me if I'm wrong, about a hundred trees a year. So when we hear about thirty-five or seventy, that we're barely getting ahead on our townwide goals when these sort of things happen. So you have a lot of people who are really working for this. But I really have to commend your taking responsibility and wanting to make it right. That's the right thing to do, and I'm glad to hear that. So thank you for coming tonight.
We do think that the suggestion of the tree warden that we have, that you initially propose a plan, that we, the shade tree advisory committee and the planning board review this and determine, and actually hold a hearing on it, with the public able to participate and determine what the final plan should be. What do you think, Branch? Is that a reasonable way of proceeding?
Yeah, yeah. And if we can come up with some kind of resolution, the only other note I had in my bullets here is we want to make sure that there's some kind of performance surety, because we're going to be probably proposing a little larger than inch and a half, two-inch trees that require significant maintenance. So I'm going to suggest that we get at least two years of surety to make sure that these things grow and survive.
I think that, and where there should be a condition, but I do think that, yes.
I just wanted to add, I have some of the pictures, the public was interested in seeing them, if the public does come to talk.
You can put them up there?
Yeah. It says Hillside?
Just to.
Just for public understanding.
So people understand what's in order. So why don't we, why don't we schedule something? We're going to, I mean, we're going to put your feet to the fire to get a landscape architect and come up with a, come up with a plan that replicates what previously existed insofar as you can.
Yep.
And then we're going to have a joint hearing with the shade tree advisory committee and the planning board, and we will take public comment and determine a final plan.
Alex, may I comment when you're done?
Yes.
I also want to just commend the applicant for taking responsibility. Hopefully, he'll continue to do so as we go through this process. I'd like to suggest that as part of a joint meeting, or maybe a separate meeting with the planning board and the shade tree committee, that we have a discussion about illegal or illegal tree removal, or even legal tree removal in the town of Milton, and what the penalty for that is. Because it feels like this board, not necessarily on scenic ways, not necessarily for the same reasons, but we're spending an awful lot of time talking about remediation of trees that weren't supposed to come down, or were supposed to be preserved. And it would be great if our two boards could work together to come up with a, an understanding of where we think the bar should be set for such actions in the future, perhaps the two-for-one replacement policy, or something along those lines. So if we're going to be meeting as a joint meeting anyway, it would be great if we could have a dialogue about that with the two boards at the same time.
I think that sounds like a very sensible suggestion. So how long do you think? A month? April twelfth?
That sounds good to me.
April twelfth.
Can we hold for a moment until I talk to the chairman of the tree advisory committee to see when his schedule might occur before then?
We're not going to, we're not going to meet until April twelfth.
Right. And.
Would you request longer time, or you want to?
I don't know when their meeting is.
Okay. Let them, let them up with the time.
Oh, okay. No, I mean, we could be, we could be very flexible.
We also need two weeks to add it.
Right.
So we're going to invite you to come April third, your landscape architect, your professional.
They have no meeting April third, right?
No. All right. Yeah. Is that doable?
All right. Yeah, oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. That's all right with you, chairman?
Great, thank you.
Okay, we'd like to have his group meet with the shade tree advisory committee on April third, which would make your date doable.
April twelfth is doable.
Okay. So you meet at April third, you discuss it, and we still, would we all be together on the twelfth, or would the shade tree advisory committee either be here or send a representative?
Yes.
Because we do, you heard Brian's suggestion that we do some talking.
What you're requesting is of Mr. Keneely, that he's going to file an application for scenic road for a meeting on the twelfth.
My feeling, my feeling is that you probably should come in initially with a proposed plan and get some input on it. And then you will finalize the plan, and we'll have the public hearing.
Afterwards.
Afterwards.
Thank you.
In other words, I don't see that the twelfth would be a public hearing with, I think that we would give you some, an idea of whether you're on the right track.
Yep.
But we want it to look like woods.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
Could we request that the landscape architect attend that meeting?
Yes. We want your landscape architect to come to both meetings, just because we want, he is the person who's designing it.
Yep. So April third and April twelfth.
All right, well, thank you. I agree with everyone that you're, it's, it's too bad you didn't do a survey, but it makes it much easier when someone does something and takes responsibility.
It's quite refreshing.
So we.
And is that meeting here is on the shade tree committee?
Fuller Village.
Fuller Village.
Yeah.
Fuller Village. Fuller Village at seven o'clock, if they're in there.
In the parlor.
In the parlor.
In the four hundred parlor.
Just as you go into Fuller Village, it's just straight ahead. What?
Did anyone from the historic commission want to weigh in?
I'll send you contact information.
Steve, do you want to weigh in for the historic commission while you're here?
Not really. I'm here just to hear what's going on, and we're here to hear what's going on. Clearly, we should have had a scenic road hearing. We had one recently where we were talking about seven trees. It was significant discussion. Now we have many times seven trees that have come down. And as my colleague on the commission said in an email, that this was an affront not only to the neighborhood, but to the entire town. It has to be remedied.
Yes, Linda. I'm Linda Weld, and I'm also on the historical commission. I wanted to say that one of the things that we discuss in our committee meetings frequently is the character of the town. And that character is not only buildings, but it's things like scenic roads, it's things like the amount of trees on any property, and I know we've talked about this in other locations as well. So things like the scale of buildings and the number of trees on any piece of property are things that we talk about in addition to buildings, that make up the historic character of the town. One of the things that occurred to me is that we've just had a discussion about the number of times that trees have been an issue. And I have a question about whether or not there would be a way to get a penalty in addition to remediation, that would be publicized to the extent that people would take the time to do a survey before they cut trees.
So there's plenty to discuss. It does seem to me that, does anyone have any specific comments on the procedure that we've proposed? And if not, we will put you to work.
Yep.
Yes.
Will the landscape architect do a survey of what species of trees were removed?
I would assume so.
Okay. So can we make that request, or has that been done?
I would assume that he would be working off of the town's presently prescribed tree list, which is, which would include mostly all of the native trees that are there, and some of the ones that probably, probably might have been not most desirable trees to be there.
And he should probably give you a call right at the get-go.
Trees were in there. Yes. You will ask him to give you what trees were on the site?
Yep.
What trees from the shade tree advisory committee's list should be going back in that area?
Yep.
And at what spacing?
No problem.
And being in touch with the representative of the shade tree advisory committee at the get-go would probably be useful for the landscape architect.
Yep.
And Branch can give you some contact information.
All right.
Or we'll get Mr. Clark to send it to you. But we'll get it to you.
We'll give it to him immediately. I'm going to give him your contact tomorrow.
All right. Yes.
I just wanted to thank, there were a couple members of the public that reached out to the board, and I just wanted to thank them. This is a community effort, kind of takes a village to keep a village. So I just wanted to say you were heard, and we really appreciated hearing from you, because we care about this as well. So thank you.
Okay. So we will, we will resume discussion of this matter on the twelfth of April, and the shade tree advisory committee will resume discussion on the third. And we hope for a great result.
Yep.
I just remembered the East Milton Neighborhood Association debate is on the twelfth.
Is what?
Is on the twelfth, is on April twelfth.
They're meeting it?
Yeah, I think that's the debate night.
Okay, well, so it goes. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, now, we have Milton Club or what?
No, you have the shade tree committee giving you a presentation.
Okay, the shade tree committee will give us a, this is a good lead-in.
It is.
Thank you.
Speaking of it, so before we introduce ourselves, it is quite timely, here's the shade trees, please, recommended list.
Great.
Trees for all of you as a handle. My name is Kristen Kleiman. I live at ninety-nine Otis Street. And. Fred?
Fred Taylor at ninety-eight Gulliver.
And we are members of Milton Shade Tree Advisory Committee. And so we thank you for inviting us tonight. It is certainly timely that we're here. So why are we here? Well, one of the things we want to do is just introduce ourselves and talk about our mandate. We wanted to talk about the progress was made so far, because we're pretty proud of it. And we wanted to discuss ways our committees can work together. So it really is quite a segue. So just to get, frame this, there are seven volunteers on the shade tree advisory committee and one ex-officio member who would be Branch Lane tree warden. A number of the volunteers are here. If you put your hands up and just bow. We started in late 2015. We really got going in early 2016, and we've averaged about one meeting a month. And so we're, you know, we keep pushing on. We have a charter, and I, I'm going to paraphrase the charter, so don't hold me to this. We're supposed to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen to restore and preserve Milton's tree canopy. We're supposed to support the tree warden's duties. We're supposed to support a tree inventory and update that on a regular basis, and we'll be speaking about that, because Fred was instrumental in that. We're supposed to recommend street trees and work with the DPW to maintain and encourage tree planting. And we're supposed to support educational efforts about trees. So with that said, I also want to just talk to you about the cooperation we've had with other town departments. The Board of Selectmen have been wonderful, but in particular, DPW, Chase, and Alan Bishop, the GIS guy, they've been just terrific to work with. They have been supportive and proactive. They've been responsive. So people don't say enough about town employees. We just wanted to give a shout out to them, and to Mike Dennehy. He's been terrific. So with that, I wanted to go through some of the work we've done to date. We're in the middle of trying to recertify Milton as a tree city, which is an Arbor Day designation, or the Arbor Foundation, Arbor Day Foundation designation. It has lapsed, and so we're in the middle of doing that. That's important. We just feel like you get support, it's a way of making the town more attractive, people think that being a tree city is important, it's certainly important to us. So we're working on that. We've created this recommended list of trees. And you'll see that what we've done is, they're almost, I think they're all natives except for crabs, crab apples, which are hybrids, and one could argue are semi-native. And what we've done is we've put them in small, medium, and large. And what we'd like to do is, or what we have done, is linked it to the DPW's website, and then when the DPW guys go out there, Fred will talk about how they, we identify the spots, they can then look at the list and say, okay, there's wires above, we're going to put in a small tree. Okay, we've got a really wide tree planting strip, we're going to put in a big red oak. So we think we've given them enough guidance to be able to put in the appropriate trees where they belong. And then we'll get to the inventory, which, as I say, Fred will talk about, which we did, which was our big event of 2017. So turn to you, Fred. we did, which was our big event of 2017. So, turn it to you, Fred.
So, the, the committee was commissioned because the Board of Selectmen had learned that the trees were a real trouble in Milton. And one of the things we were asked to do was to do an inventory, to figure out exactly how big a problem it is. And what, what we had to work with was that in, 10 years ago, in 2007, the town actually had gotten a grant from the DCR and had done a tree inventory. Their, a tree company had brought in two arborists, and they had gone around to all the residential streets in town and marked out where all the tree sites were and what was at each tree site. So, this was, made it possible for us to just go back out this last summer and redo it and ask what's happened in 10 years. And I should make it clear that when we talk about trees, street trees for this survey, we're talking about trees owned by the town in the tree belt on residential streets, between the sidewalk and the street. It didn't include Hillside Street, for example. So, whatever those 70 trees were, we have no idea. But most of, but all the, like 250 residential streets in town were surveyed. And there were about 6,200 trees that had been marked out. What we found was that in 2007, the arborists had said that there was about a 10% vacancy on our street trees. What we found last summer was we're now at 30% vacancies on just the same tree sites that had been inventoried 10 years ago. And what this has amounted to, if you want to annualize it, of course, things are not going to happen the same every year, but it would amounted to about 140 trees being taken down every year, mainly, I suppose, by the DPW, but also EverSource and also homeowners. But they were only replacing about 25 trees. Something happened in, you know, 2007 or sometime in that timeframe where the town was no longer replacing trees as they took them down. So, we took this information to the Board of Selectmen, and we took it to Michael Dennehy, and we took it to Jace Berkeley, and things are moving. So, this last year, they found money in the budget for, we believe, overall, there's going to be about 150 trees planted. I think 70 to 100 last fall and more this spring. What we did was, there's so many trees missing, you know, over 1,000 trees missing, to do about 150 is basically the attrition rate. So, we haven't really got it, the money to go back and restore what's missing, but we do have the money at least this year to stop the attrition for one year, and we're hoping that goes forward. What we did was, to get the most bang for the buck, we went to the main thoroughfares in town and looked for the biggest vacancies, the most noticeable vacancies, and we asked them to plant those first. We're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to find streets that are the worst-hit, the biggest tree deserts, just to get the best out of this with the money we have. We're still trying to find a way to restore back to where it was 10 years ago, which means you basically have to plant not just 140 trees a year, but you almost have to double that if, over 10, every year for 10 years to get back to where it was. I think I'd make just one other point having to do with trees. We do have a tree list, native trees, big and small. One thing we discovered is that 50% of the trees on the streets, the street trees, are maples. And 30% actually are Norway maples, which are no longer legal to plant in Massachusetts, because they're invasive. But one of the recommendations common in the, in street tree planting is to diversify. So, when things, when people are talking about what they want to plant, we would ask them to try to pick a number of things from the list and maybe even avoid maples for the time being, even though they're, you know, a red maple is such a beautiful tree. But we need to diversify in case something like Dutch elm disease comes through or something, because if you have all your trees in town, one species, then it just helps a disease come through, and you can lose everything all at once. So, I think that's a summary of the inventory.
Thank you. And, you know, just as an aside, if people are wondering why we chose the main thoroughfares as the priority tree list, there's a number of reasons why. One is, say, bang for your buck, but it also calms traffic. It's been proven over and over again. And I think everybody in this town knows that we have a traffic problem. And so, we, we're just endeavoring to help the town. We also know that trees take up particulate matter. And so, with the airplane noise and the air, and the pollution, not the noise, the pollution from the airplanes that come over this town, trees are important. So, I probably don't have to tell any of you that, but I'm just going to get on my soapbox there. So, now, how do we work together? I guess that's the reason why we're here. We think that there's ways that we should explore, ways to work together. And we have some ideas about protecting trees in the, in the right-of-way. And some of them have already been called out, I think, here. So, we thought we'd pitch a couple of those ideas to you and discuss them, and, and then discuss other ways we might work together. One of them is that we would ask the Planning Board to, to require developers to have a tree inventory of the right-of-ways that they have. And that would include calling out the natives and the invasives, the invasive trees like Norway maples. Also, we think that a tree is a tree if it's two inches diameter of breast height, DBH, not four inches. So, we think that it, a tree should be a tree if it's more than two inches. We think that if trees have been removed, they should come from the recommended tree list. And we think that there should definitely be a multiplier. I do not, we do not believe, not I, we do not believe that a one-for-one is the right way to go, because we can't replace 150-year-old tree with a two-inch caliper red maple. So, we think that a multiplier penal, and, and also penalties perhaps. I mean, it, if there's no incentive, if you want to ask forgiveness instead of permission, because the forgiveness isn't a big stick, then you probably should increase the size of the stick. And so, we're suggesting that this, this committee think about making the penalties strong enough that people will take a second look at, you know, "I'll just cut them down, and I'll pay the penalty." Or, "I'll, I'll, I'll plant one-for-one." So, we, we would like you, and would like to work with you about how we get more aggressive about putting up the, the appropriate deterrents for people to cut down and then ask for permission, or ask for forgiveness later. So, that's something that we feel strongly about. And, and then, we also agree with, with Branch's idea where you shouldn't just put the trees in, you should have a maintenance plan. There should be some sort of, you know, monitoring and, and then coming back to this, to this body and saying, "Those 70 trees that we planted," or whatever the number is, you know, 65 of them are still alive two and a half years later. So, we think that the remediation makes, the maintenance plan makes great sense. So, that's generally some of the ideas. It was sort of a brainstorming session we had a few nights ago, and we wanted to elicit your reaction and comments and other suggestions you might have.
So, the, the, the property owner that came in just before you, he was very refreshing, because he was absolutely willing to take responsibility for what he had done. Our board has seen a number of developers kind of, you know, aren't, aren't so responsible. And there's something called deterrence theory, and it's a well-accepted tenet, that to stop misconduct, there must be a certainty of a punishment. Our board is in an awkward position, because we're not enforcement, yet a lot of these issues come to us. Joe Prondak is, is head of enforcement in our town. I'm not sure if I've got his title right, but Building Commissioner. So, we would, I would be happy to help loop him into this discussion, or if you want to meet with him, or we could have another meeting as a group. I think he, it would be great to talk with him, to talk about better ways of enforcement, how we can all work together to make things more consistent for him. And, and I really appreciated the language that you used. We've, we've got to make it uncomfortable. We've got to make people feel like not willing to try this and see what happens. We want them to not want to do this. So, so I, I think it would be nice to loop him into this discussion. You know, my understanding is, it doesn't have to be a huge price. It just has to be a certainty that there will be a punishment that works the best in the long run. So, so that's what, that's where I want to get to personally.
Well, the current punishment, it seems to me that the trees have a value. And, I mean, you take these 70 trees that were cut down, and Branch Lane mentions that they have a value. And obviously, if you destroy that value, you, traditional law says you have to pay for it. So, that there is a, a significant potential liability out there. We want to get something that's easier than having to go to court and have an expert try and establish what the value is. But it's, you know, it's significant. But we, you're right. We want a certainty, we want the building inspector to be able to do something right away.
And another thing that's happened before our board is people say that the tree was diseased, but there's no documentation of it being diseased. And in a situation like this, where you have 70 trees and numerous species, we know that it wasn't diseased. So, so there's just this kind of thing, that there's a bunch of things that, that developers or, or property owners would hide behind. And, and we want to, you know, remove that cloudy confusion.
I think that's where the tree inventory, that's what we were thinking, too. And that's why, you know, the invasives, if somebody wants to take down a Norway maple, we're okay with that. If you want to take down a diseased tree, that's fine. But a professional needs to come in and do a tree inventory, we believe.
Totally agree with you.
Yeah, I agree with you. Thank you.
You have something to say, Cheryl?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to say that I appreciate your effort and am supportive of your effort. But I also wanted to add that, that the Planning Board, we've been cognizant of tree loss, not just within the right-of-way or the public way, but when we put in new roads or we're putting in new driveways or we have construction sites where it's easier to clear cut than it is to walk around trees, we're really working hard on tree management plan, tree protection, having the, sort of the driveways and roadways be right-sized. You know, right now, our regulations are one-size-fits-all, but not all conditions really demand it to, or require the same width. So, we've talked about looking at those, can we right-size those a little bit, so that we can avoid taking down particularly older trees. So, we're working basically with you in terms of intent on the pieces that we do.
Alex, thank you for coming. Thank you for all of your work. I like all of your suggestions. I think they're very positive. I have a question about, is there an opportunity for homeowners, if they wish, to contribute to the tree replacement program, either financially or to purchase a tree or work with you or the DPW or?
There is. There's a gift tree program. And it's been around for a while. And there's been so much work to, to do, as Fred alluded to, that we haven't quite made it clear and easy for residents to do the gift, gift tree program, because there's so much to do. But that is on our list for 2018. And we, and the encouraging thing is, we have been contacted, I think every member on the committee, by neighbors or by email, for people saying, "I would love to, to," you know, our neighborhood, I, we had one neighborhood that said, "We'd love to put in a bunch of trees, but we don't know how, and we don't know what we should put in. Can you help us?" And our response was, "Great, but can you just be a little more patient?" Because we have this big issue of trying to get the DPW to put in the street trees. And frankly, putting in a tree takes a long time. So, 150 trees by the DPW, 75 in the spring and 75 in the fall, I think you know the, how small that staff is. It's a pretty impressive number. And they do send them out for a bid, too, but there aren't that many people that are interested in doing that kind of work. So, anyway, that's a long way of saying it's in the works, and we think that it is an excellent way of trying to get back some of those lost, those forever lost trees.
Great.
And it's probably, you probably have maintenance in there, too. When you adopt a tree, you adopt watering it.
That's, well, when they, when they come in, we're, we're sending out a letter. So, if you get a tree in front, you'll get a letter from us that, because people don't know. I mean, my own niece had one in front of hers, and she said, "Can I touch it?" And I said, "You're supposed to water it," you know. So, she thinks it's the town's property. So, I think it's, it behooves us to send us-
Which it will be.
Yes. But we need to send a letter to people to say, "No, please water it. You know, love this thing in front of your house. It's going to increase your property values and decrease your heating bills."
Well, let's give some thought to you. You've, tree inventory, the recommended multiplier, you might think about. We will think about it. Higher penalties and, and specific penalties. I mean, a way to figure out what the penalty is without having to get an expert into appropriate deterrents, the maintenance plan. Maybe when we meet on the 12th, we can do some specifics.
That'd be great.
Bill?
Just for the committee's knowledge, the Planning Board has given out this list to the Four Landscape Trees at Woodmere, the Three Homes at 333 Brush Hill, Wood, Milton Woods, the Pulte Project, and Jill Kathleen Way. They've all been, the trees have all come from this list.
That's good to hear.
So, we've been, we have been using it.
Great. Thank you. We'll walk and make sure they're the right ones.
Is this list online?
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's either Central Avenue or, Central Avenue Milton Club, or is it Mathers Lane? What is, let's take a hand count. How, how many Milton Club people do we have here?
You mean the Housick?
Yeah, Milton Housick. We've got a few. And Mathers Lane? We've got more. We're going to go into Mathers Lane. Okay, Mr. Hannigan, why don't you come up and tell us what is being proposed? And you might as well move your, your pedestal down to the, yeah. Not a pedestal, it's an easel.
Do you need to see it or the audience?
It's the same thing that we have? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Robert Hannigan, engineer for the Upper 15 Mathers Street LLC. Then we're here for a definitive subdivision application. Originally, it was presented to the Planning Fund for approval not required before May. We're fronting two streets, but we're advised that because Beach Street is not approved, we had to go, go through this process. This first sheet is an existing conditions plan.
I guess I should say, this is a duly advertised public hearing on a definitive subdivision plan. So, continue.
This is an existing conditions plan. Mathers Street is here. Runs from Birch Street all the way down to Pleasant Street. And Beach Street connects Mathers with Lyman Road. It's a single-family lot existing, 16,875 square feet. There's an existing single-family residence with a, an existing garage barn, and they will both be torn down. We have been before the Historical Commission and had a hearing, and they deemed that it was non, not important in their, in their, in their view. The, there's existing water, The, there's existing water, gas, sewer, and a drain line that runs down Beach Street and across an easement through the 11th Beach Street property and ends up down in, it doesn't end up, but it continues down to Birch Street. The existing sewer connection is to an existing sewer line in Beach Street, and the existing water line connects to the water line in Mathers. As I said, the proposal is to remove these two structures and create two lots, both approximately 8,200 and 8,600 square feet, one with frontage on, on Mathers Street, 95 feet of frontage. The minimum requirement for a residency development is 75 feet and 7,500 square feet. And the frontage on Beach Street for the second lot, Lot B, is 135 feet. This is an existing, I'm sorry, a proposed utility and grain plan. I've superimposed two generic house, house footprints on the property, both with two car garages, one with access from Beach Street and the other one with access from Mathers Street. The water line, water service will be to Mathers Sewer, and then the proposed sewer, this house will be in this existing line on Beach Street, and the water line will connect from, from Mathers onto, across a piece of the property into the house. The, as shown on this plan, there is an existing pavement area in this area, extends about 52 feet from, from the edge of the street line, edge of the pavement to here. The original proposal was to pave a, an 18-foot-wide pavement to the end of the, the proposed property. We spoke with some of the neighbors the other night, and they're, they can speak to the issue themselves, but their concern was that there was too much pavement. And so what we have now proposed is to, to cut that back to the minimum required, 75 feet from, from the corner of the lot to, to approximately here. The design of the road pretty much mirrors the edge of the existing driveway for number 19, Mathers Street. And the reason for that is that their access to the garage, which is significantly lower than, than Beach Street, is, a concern of theirs is water, obviously, in their garage and basement. So what I did is I proposed to degrade the road along the existing edge of pavement and have the gutter line there with a crown on the road, and then slope off and have a gutter line over on this side. The other comment that the neighbors had was the width of the pavement. We had proposed originally an 18-foot-wide pavement, and their concerns were, again, that there was too much pavement, and so we will be proposing to reduce that to a 15-foot width, if the board approves. That's pretty much a summary. I had submitted a, with the application, the required SDE statement of development effect. We can go over that if you'd like. Or, there's also a list of waiver requests from the subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay. I don't think that, I think that we all can read it and going through it. I think the issues, the people know what the issues are, and does the board have some questions for Mr. Hanigan first?
I do. Are there any other homes that would be accessed off of Beach Street? I'm looking at an aerial. It looks like there is a home that is accessed off of-
Yes, there are. Actually, there's, there's five existing driveways. There's a dirt driveway for, for the existing home off of Beach. There's the driveway for 19, Mathers, I'm sorry, 15, Mathers. Senator Timmeltie has a, well, he doesn't actually have a driveway. He parks in the front, but there's no defined driveway. And then the two homes, 44 Lyman Road and the next one, which may be 46 or 48, both access off of Lyman into Beach, and their driveways are off of, off of Beach Street. So total of five existing, and there won't be any more added because there'll be one, one for the proposed house on Lot B, and then the curb cut for Lot A will be on, off of Mathers Street.
And would, what would you estimate the width of the existing paved or gravel? Is it gravel or paved, the existing?
Driveways.
No, the street, Beach.
Existing or?
Existing.
It varies. It's significantly wider at Mathers, narrows down to probably, probably, probably the 18 feet, and then it becomes gravel after that. One of the concerns of the homeowner at 44 Lyman was there are a row of pine trees that they had planted somewhat in the right-of-way, so they, they feared losing those.
This is a private way?
It's a private way, yes.
And has the fire department or the police department have any difficulties in the, in the past, gaining access down Beach Street?
I haven't had any feedback.
No, they have not. There's several of the firemen live on Lyman Road and use Beach as one of the cutouts.
Do the Beach Street residents pay, I know there's so many different types of private ways. Do they pay for the maintenance of that road already? Do they have a?
I don't think really there's any maintenance. I'm not sure. They can address that, the neighbors. If they hear, they can speak to that better than I.
Other questions?
Yeah, just coming in from New York here. The, I don't have the most recent plan in front of me. I do have the old plan, but I'm not sure if there have been modifications since that plan was shown.
No, no modifications.
Okay. So I guess my only comment, I'm not thrilled with the 15 feet. It's a precedent that I worry about, but I think in this specific application, with it serving such a small area, it's probably something I can overlook. I did mention to Mr. Clark at our last hearing, after our last hearing, that I do think that anywhere that we're putting in a street that we're, that we're entitling, especially when it connects to another road with sidewalks, that we really should be trying to put sidewalks in here. So especially if we're reducing the road width to 15 feet, I'd love to have some sort of sidewalk added to this plan, because I think it's an important amenity for the whole community, and it will continue to stitch together all of our sidewalks throughout Milton that exists today.
One of the things that I would say about 15 feet versus 18 feet is, I live on a private lane that's 15 feet, that serves 10 homes, and to pass, one vehicle pretty much has to stop and get right on the edge to pass. So I do share some of Brian's concerns of dropping it down to 15 feet for, if you have a pedestrian on there, then you have another situation altogether, particularly with no sidewalk.
It's not a major thoroughfare, however, even though the firemen may use it from time to time. Is that a picture? Yeah, it's not a major thoroughfare. Why don't we hear from?
This is Beach Street, and this is 15, Mathers, Mathers Street and Lyman Road. And this is the lot that we decided. And you can see, there's a driveway here for number 52, one for 44, and then a dirt driveway for the existing home, and one here for number 19. And Senator parks in the front there. There's no, there's really not enough room for a driveway.
We're glad to hear from Bill Clark. Is that right?
Yeah, from the board. I have a letter that has been requested to get read into the record.
Well, why don't you, you might as well do it now.
Concerns of the, on the proposed subdivision of 15 Mathers Street from Ellen Pendolee, 44 Lyman Road. The following are two items that I'm worried about with the subdivision of the property at 15 Mathers Street and Beach Street. Roadway, by paving it, it will encourage the use of the private way as a cut through for more traffic and will result in water damage or drainage onto my property. Don't pave the road, or pave only the first 75 feet of Mathers Street and only 15 feet wide. Two, if paved, then add another drain into the street. Three, if paved to the Pendolee property line, then divert the road nearest the Pendolee lot, away from the Pendolee lot like it is now. So instead of it going straight, if you're actually driving on it, on this picture, it would come down from the top. There's a slight S to the road that allows the trees in this area. The roadway comes like this and jumps over here. There are trees in the right-of-way right here. No sidewalk. Under stormwater runoff, currently, the proposed subdivision has a large slope running from Mathers Street down to the Pendolee property. With adding two new houses, this will cause a water drainage problem. One of the proposed houses will be 10, 10 feet from the Pendolee lot line and at the lowest part of the slope. Recommendations, water from the roads needs to be diverted away from the new house and the Pendolee lot. Underground diverters for guttered downspouts, water from the slope of the land and the road will need to be diverted away from the Pendolee and other abutted properties. If the soil around the foundation is sloped away from the house, then that water will also have to be diverted.
So what do you think of that?
We discussed that last night and recognized their concerns. What I had said is, as part of the process for obtaining a building permit, there would be required to recharge the, the gutter and downspout runoff into, into recharges around the lot. And also, in regards to an additional drain, a catch basin in, in Beach Street, the applicant had agreed, he was at the meeting the other night, and agreed to put another catch basin on this side of, of the proposed pavement and tie into the, to the existing drain in, in Beach Street. So that would catch any increased runoff off the pavement into the dirt portion of the, of the existing Beach Street.
Okay, that addresses the issues.
I, yes, as I said, we discussed it, and I made those recommendations, and, and I said that what the neighbors should do is either appear before the board or send a letter, you know, voicing their concerns, and that we had discussed.
Okay. Yes.
Have you had conversations with the town engineer about the storm drainage design?
Have not, no.
Bill, has the town engineer seen the drawings?
He has. He has not made any comments to it. I only know one other in that, one other neighbor is concerned about the, the slope of the road and keeping the water from going to the Cook property, going towards that new catch basin. They want it to go towards that new catch basin, not towards the Cook driveway.
Right. As I, we discussed with Mr. Cook the other night, was the, the design is off-centered in the right-of-way to take advantage of matching his existing driveway. He put a sort of a berm here, raised portion, paved portion before the water gets into, into his garage. He also put in a trench drain.
He has two drains then now, because there's so much water.
Yes, yeah.
So he's trying to make sure it doesn't get more.
So the design is focused on that, to, to match the existing edge of pavement, create a gutter line there, which would flow beyond his, his driveway, as it currently does now. So there'd be no, no impact on, on his garage.
Question for Bill?
He can speak to that. I believe he's here tonight.
Bill, when there's a proposal to tie into an existing utility on a private road, what's the town's responsibility in terms of review typically?
Is there, there were permits for those drain lines with the engineering department. What those permits are, I just know there were permits. I don't know the process.
So we don't know the history of how these catch basins or berms or other things, whether they were approved or who did them, or?
I do not.
So would it require our town engineer to go out and do some kind of existing conditions evaluation in order to evaluate the proposed?
Tie into it without first going to him, but he's had this plan for a month.
Right, but normally, if they're going to look at a proposed plan, they're going to look at what they have on their, on record, right? And then they're going to evaluate what's proposed against their record. What it sounds like is they're not going to have a record, an accurate record to compare it to.
We actually have a, we do have a record of what-
What's there?
What's in those streets.
Okay. Thank you.
And in the process, too, whether it's a private way or a public way, if you're going to tie into a town utility, you need to go through the process and fill out the application with the DPW.
Well, I'm just accustomed to on our subdivision proposals that we have a storm drainage design submitted to us. And this just says that it's tying into the storm drain. And the existing topography and the new topography, then there's not a new topography shown with the proposed plan, so we don't know how the storm water is going to be altered by the new proposal as compared to how it works now, right?
Well, what you do in your statement of development effect, you point out that usually we have your engineering reviewed by a peer reviewer, and you're suggesting that the town engineer should be able to do that peer review. And I think that's probably right. At least the town engineer should be asked to do it.
The, the plan behind, at the head of the room, is, that is the town's drainage map. So that drain line is on, it's, it's town drainage.
Right. Well, I guess what I'm trying to do is understand how we're going to make sure that the concerns about storm drainage are being addressed before, instead of after, like we've seen on other projects, and a lot of problems come up. And I, I'm not, that's why I'm asking these questions, because it's not clear to me how we're going to be assured that we're not going to have problems on adjoining in downslope properties, from what I've seen. And I'm trying to ask how we're going to get some assurance, whether it's through the town engineer, or another submission of storm drain plan, anyway.
Well, I mean, someone has to review them, even if they do another submission, and the town engineer would seem to be the right person.
May I follow up on that? So I know, Lauren, you've been coordinating multiple department meetings on development projects, and I think this is probably a good case study for that, because there's multiple folks who are going to have to weigh in, and I think maybe before our next meeting, assuming we're not rendering any decisions tonight, someone could report back on how that went and whatever, what the engineer says, and, and map out a process for moving forward.
Well, I mean, you have a point that you have a drainage design, and you suggest the town engineer could review it in your statement of development effect, rather than paying for a peer reviewer to do it. And I think that we should ask the town engineer to do it, and if he, for whatever reason, says that he doesn't want to, or and, or won't, then- then we may have to hire a peer reviewer. But let's start, let's start the way you suggest.
Just to issue, to address the existing and proposed grading, essentially, it's going to remain unchanged. This home is going to be a walkout. There's going to be a slight grading in the rear. There's going to be some grading on the side here where the existing footprint is. There'll be a new wall in here. And essentially, once you get, once you get past this point, it's relatively flat in this, most of the property and it's going to remain, remain the same.
Do we have a, I mean, I'm looking at the utility and grading plan and I, it is mystifying. It doesn't, it doesn't really seem to show what's going to happen, does it?
With respect to?
Just with respect to what it's going to be once you complete your work. The new grades, I just don't see where.
On the left-hand side of the proposed. This is a proposed rating. There's a slight rating change from 129 and a half to 130 on the rear of this home. And essentially the.
So that green line, what does it represent?
That green line is the existing sewer service for the home here. That's going to be abandoned, cut and capped. So the proposed grading is in this location, slight bit in front to raise the grade. And then put a new wall in here and going from 129 and a half to 130 in the back here. And from here back, it's.
And along, along Beach Street, there's no change in grade?
There's no change in grade proposed because the design was to match the existing pavement for Mr. Cook's property. So it wouldn't be higher. If, this is a relatively steep grade. And if it were raised, then flattened out a little bit, then it would put the road higher than his, the entrance to.
All right, well, I didn't get that. I thought you were discussing about doing something on Beach Street. But it's all on Lot A that the grading is changing?
Yes, in this, this area.
In that area. What you might do is just do a, on a plant, just put a cutout of the construction of the proposed street.
Right.
So it still seems to me though that now, this was one parcel before and that slope was sloping down to the garage. But now this is going to take storm water at the surface and go down to the lot B garage, right?
Right here, yeah. I mean, essentially, it currently goes here. It slopes from 139 down to 130. And once the building is removed, it will essentially do the same, same thing.
So wouldn't, wouldn't you be required to not take that storm water and put it on that new lot? Wouldn't you need to handle it on Lot A?
There'll be a combination of removing the existing building that has no recharge and proposed building that will have gutters and downspouts recharge. There'll be a reduction in the runoff due to the construction.
It seems to me you, in order not to put one property, storm water from one property onto the property of another, you would need to do some kind of regrading and basically take it to the backyard of Lot A rather than to the garage of Lot B.
I could look at that.
Okay. About that, Lauren?
Got it.
We're going to want a, we're going to want a list. Who wants to be heard on this application? Anyone?
I live at 11.
Come on up and introduce yourself and.
I'm just, I'm forced splitting the property and it's a junkyard now. So I'm looking forward to the two new houses and cleaning everything up.
Okay, so you.
I think you can figure out the similar situation.
15, 15 feet?
I'm at 11 Mathaus.
And you think 75 feet, I mean, you've got a smoother surface if you go longer than 75 feet.
No, I'm on the other side.
She lives here.
Right next door.
She lives here.
Oh, okay. So you don't care. You don't use it as a cut through right now.
No, I'm saying I'm in support of splitting up the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Well, it seems, Mr. Hannigan, that, yes, sir?
I'm Fred Cook, 90 Mathaus Street. And my driveway is the one he's talking about.
Yeah.
And as long as he does that and no water comes in my driveway, I'm fine with it.
As long as he does what he said he's going to do. Yes, sir?
I'm Kurt Revert, 16 Mathaus Street, across the street. Just had a question on Lot A. There's a street tree. Appears to be right where the curb cover would be, so I'm just wondering what the plan is for that tree.
Currently, there's no plan. There is in fact a, a street tree there.
The only reason I bring it up is because the street has lost a number of trees in the last few years, so quite a large tree.
This is a conceptual layout of a footprint for a house. It could be flipped. But it, the tree is, is a street tree. So if it is to be removed, I have to come to the town to remove it because it's not on the lot.
Well, and also when you build a new road, you're supposed to install street trees. So we've probably got a couple of trees here.
Along, along Beach Street, every 50 feet.
Probably up to the end of the lot line.
135, yeah, sure.
Is that tree they're talking about?
What?
Is that tree that they're talking about?
And that's going to stay, right?
That's the question. What is the plan?
Do you have a plan for that, Mr. Hannigan? For that tree?
We don't yet. It's, actually, it's right here. We don't yet. As I said, that's a conceptual footprint. So if in fact it, it ends up like that, then we'd have to go to the town to get permission to remove it and replace it.
We might, we might condition subdivision on your keeping it.
Well, if that's the case, then we could have a side entry garage perhaps.
We, you'd have what?
A side entry garage around the front entry garage. We could have the, shift the driveway to this side.
That's not a hard thing to do.
No, no. And again, you know, the, the footprint may flip, so the garage may be on this side. There's no other trees between here and there.
Does the tree look good? Is it healthy?
Healthy tree, yeah.
Okay, and we would, we would give us good practice about how you're going to protect it during construction. All right. Who else wants to be heard on this?
Hi, I'm Ellen Klisham. I'm at 14 Mathaus. Just wanted to know what the plan was, whether to build the homes at the same time or to do one and then the other.
Two together.
Same time, so foundations simultaneously, okay.
Review, that's your answer? Yes, simultaneously.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we have to decide whether 15 feet and no sidewalks is a, and, did I see another one? Yes.
Hi, my name is Heather Herring. I live at 40 Lyman. So my property backs up to maybe A, is it? Yeah. So I'm totally in favor of the two houses and I think whatever they do to it is going to be wonderful. And if you saw it now, you'd think, oh dear Lord, you live back there. Like, it's just a mess and it's going to be great. We're excited to have new neighbors. I think paving the road 75 feet is, is not enough. I think it should be completely paved. It's, it's a gully and it kind of goes down. So I think in paving it, they could help grade it, bring it up a little. Obviously, keeping in mind anyone's driveway who might be affected, you know, making sure that they're made whole and that the water drains away. But this road is used often. There are lots of kids, my son included, your son included, your nephew included, who use this all the time. I'm not sure about a sidewalk. I don't know if a sidewalk could fit. Kids use the middle of the street like a sidewalk. But it is a road that is used by cars and it, it just seems weird to pave it. Basically, where it would stop is right in front of the person's driveway who parks like. Uh-oh, perpendicular parallel. Doesn't have a driveway, like parks in front of their house. So anyway, that's, I think you should pave the whole road up to Lyman. It's, I think it's just going to be more of a disaster paving it halfway.
The pushback, of course, is that the better it's paved, the more people use it.
But so many people use it now, so I don't think there really could be, I think we're at maximum capacity. I mean.
You think you're at capacity, people are going to use it?
Yeah, I mean, like, unless I start recruiting people to come drive on it, I think the most possible people drive on it. So why not make it usable and not have cars bottom out and not have the bottom, not have it flood all the time?
Were you suggesting from Mathaus to Lyman Road?
To Lyman, yeah, yeah. And those trees that I think 44 Lyman put up, that are in the road, you know, that are, that are not on their property. They planted trees.
Well, it's a private way, so they own to the middle.
Sure, but it's.
They are on their property. There's a right-of-way there.
Yes, they're partially on their property. But those, I think, shouldn't be taken into consideration of having it 15 or 18. I think we should consider, the road is the road. And also that property probably would benefit a lot by having it paved because that property is always flooded in the back. Like, there is, it is always water. So I think it would be better not worse. That's all.
Better not worse to pave the entire road?
Correct.
At 18 feet or at 15 feet?
I don't really care. You guys can choose that. But I think it should be paved the whole way.
Right, and then, so there are some people who seem to think that it should be paved for only 75 feet.
Right.
And the applicant says it should be paved for 150 feet, 140 feet.
Well, the original proposal was 135. And then based on the neighbors' input, we decided to propose to bring it back to 75. Maybe out of line, but I think it's unrealistic to require the developer to extend it to Lyman Road on an additional 135 feet.
Okay.
Is there anyone here who feels strongly that they don't want to see it paved the entire way? Would you mind elaborating on here?
I'm Ellen Pendolee, 44 Lyman Road. My driveway is on Birch Street. This, Beach Street, sorry. The street has been unpaved my whole life. I've lived there. We've had puddles. We've always had a few water issues. It's livable. It keeps the traffic down. And I disagree with Heather, where she doesn't live on the side street, that it's major traffic. There's a few cars that go down the street, that's true. We've lived with that amount of time and I would hate to see it paved because it would make it a true throughway, cut through with a lot more traffic than we have now. I do actually have another question. What happens with the drainage during construction?
I suppose there could be a condition to, to provide for the construction of the catch basin prior to the construction on the lot. At that point in time, there'd be protection around the catch basin rim for silitation of the, of the drainage system. So that would be perhaps constructed initially. You could condition that as part of the approval.
Oh, we have, take it back.
Also, under protection of soil erosion, everything else, at the time of construction along between the Pendolee lot and the house there, there's, right now, it's more transitioned from the new lot B, I guess it is, into the Pendolee and other neighbors in that area. Is there going to be any erosion control being done? And permanently fix the water does not run as it does right now down in that direction with, you know, landscape and curvature of the road, road as well as the soil itself?
Typically, that, that's a provision for construction. There would be silitation barrier along, along the areas where there, where there would be potential runoff.
And as well as what are, what are the plans for after construction is done to prevent water flowing from, in front of the new structure B in the road into, you know, other people's lots?
Well, as, as I said, there would be no increase in runoff off the lot because the structure, which is totally on, on the proposed Lot B, has no gutters and downspouts. This proposed residence will have gutters and downspouts recharged into, into recharges underground. So there will be no increase in runoff. The grading, you can't, you can't grade from one property to another. So, so it'll either be flat or it'll be graded with perhaps a swale from, from the high point here towards the back and towards the front.
So you're saying there's no grading?
A couple of things. It seems to me that if they paved the road from beginning to end, that this may be subject going back, this may be an application that could go back to an A&R application. And perhaps they could resolve a lot of the concerns about width and whatnot by paving the whole thing from end to end and coming back to us with a road that is suitable for a much more typical A&R in our town. Beyond that, I would suggest that it seems like between lack of input from staff and concerns about drainage and obviously discrepancies amongst the neighborhood, it, it seems to me that there's some homework and more work that needs to be done in this application. And I would recommend the applicant either work with Bill or go back to the neighborhood and try to figure out what the best plan is here and come back to the board after regrouping. Because it doesn't seem like there's consensus amongst the board. And it doesn't seem like there's consensus amongst the neighborhood right now.
All right, now, what if you, if you had a meeting with the neighbors, what was the, the general view on the road? I mean, do you have any numbers?
They could speak for themselves, but consensus I felt was they didn't want the 135 feet. They preferred it paved 75. As we discussed with Mr. Cook, the way it would be aligned, it was fine for him. Ellen Pendolee wanted a catch basin on the end of the proposed roadway to tie into the existing drain. 15 feet wide, no sidewalk. I mean, it's nice to have a side, it's nice to have a sidewalk, but.
Would there be, would there be gravel along the side? I mean, it would be just set in and the, would it be above the, the side of the road? Or would the side of the road be the same level as the, you would try and keep it at the same level?
It would track the existing because of the fact of Mr. Cook's issue with respect to, he didn't want any, any drainage in his, into his garage, any runoff into his garage. So the design is based on hugging the edge of, of his existing pavement, keeping that at the existing elevation, crowning it to the center, five inches, five-inch crown, and then sloping off to the other side. And perhaps some lawn, lawn from the edge of the road to, to the proposed house.
I'd like to see a cross-section through that roadway in both directions. And I am concerned. concerned about the adequacy of the road for a subdivision. I mean, we look at adequacy of roadways oftentimes, and if it's got potholes and low spots and gullies and so forth. Who actually owns the roadway?
I think the abutters do.
So it's owned down the center by the adjacent, down to the center by the adjacent property owners?
That's just, you know, an assumption because obviously, it's a legal matter. There are cases where the roadway is owned by a single party, but in the usual case, the abutters own to the middle of the private roads, in the usual case. But if this is the usual case, we don't know, but...
Well, I think it would be useful to know, at least for this section in front of this property, who owns what, who owns it?
Which property is that?
For this property that you're working with.
Oh, that's the applicant.
Owns all of it?
Yeah, yeah. Owns the sixteen thousand seven hundred square feet, the whole lot.
Owns the entire roadway?
Oh, I can't comment on that. I'll bow to the attorney's opinion.
So do you have permission to improve the roadway, then, if you don't know who owns it?
In my experience, even private ways, the way the deed reads typically is, can be used as roads are typically used in the town of Milton, so...
So there should be some deed research on the properties along Beach to know that before we could actually make a decision?
We can, we can have an attorney look at that.
So...
Just what Brian had said, you know, pave the whole thing and then come back with a form A. The definitive subdivision process, the way I see it, the rules and regulations of the planning board are for the division of land and construction of roads, so I don't think that that's, that can be done. I think we need your approval to construct the road.
To construct the road, you probably don't need our approval to fix it, but it does seem to me that there are issues here which are best handled by the planning board. In other words, drainage is, I think, something that we're interested in, and if it were an A&R, you would, we wouldn't have any input. But getting back to the roadway, I mean, the drainage seems to be solved, doesn't it?
Solved? I think we need to...
Oh, I mean, solved, subject to, I mean, solved, subject to the town engineer saying it's solved.
John Thompson, and discuss that with him.
Plus, a new grading plan, which has a swell which contains stormwater.
What he said he's going to do is, that's what I mean by solved, and then assuming that John Thompson says this works. So that would get us back to the roadway, and whether or not we're willing to do seventy-five feet, or one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, or two-hundred-and-forty feet, however long Beach Street is, and what sort of width we would require, and whether or not sidewalks would be, would be required. But I, as far as sidewalks are concerned, it seems to me that if we have that hard-packed surface next to the roadway, that would be adequate. And I personally think that fifteen feet would be adequate because it is a pretty short street, and it's, and if it isn't improved beyond, I mean, its use, if you enter from Mathos Street, will be just fine. It's simply if you try and enter from Lyman Road, that it will be a little trickier because it won't be paved. But I think that if there's one way in, that probably is adequate.
The homes along, along Lyman, and, actually, this house was built in, I think, eighteen ninety-four, and most of them are the late forties, early fifties, and the lots in this whole area and the road were on a plan of same date, I think, in the eighteen ninety-four area. So it's been used continuously by the homes on Lyman and Mathos and the one home on H Street.
If it is unpaved, I think that the point is right, that people will be less excited about using it, saying, "Let's turn down Beach," when they know that it is not smooth sailing all the way.
Well, we have roads so that they can be used. And, you know, why have a road if you can't use it? And the road is supposed to give adequacy to subdivisions, so the fact that it's, we wouldn't approve that road in the condition that it's in now.
No, but it's not a town-owned road.
Even if it were private, we would not approve the road in the condition that it is now for a new subdivision. So the question is how far it needs to get improved and to what level, right?
Yeah, now, if I may, I would really like to hear from more neighbors about it. I don't mean to kick the can to another meeting, but I really would, I mean, because I think we've heard from one neighbor that they'd like it paved the whole way, and another neighbor that they don't want it paved the whole way, and it seems as though there might have been broader engagement. So I'd like to know what more people say about that. I mean, I'd also really like to see something from the fire department in this file written that says fifteen feet or eighteen feet, what do they require? So I don't know if I'm prepared to make a decision tonight.
Well, this would, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't make a decision. If we could make a decision about the roadway, that would be useful because Mr. Hannigan can't design anything if he doesn't know what the roadway is supposed to look like.
Well, as I suggested earlier, I'd like to see cross-sections in both directions on this roadway to understand issues that have been discussed relative to the property across the street, and also, because it is coming in steep, and if, again, if we were looking at this as a new subdivision, we probably would question that. And I would like to understand better the condition and what kind of waiver this really is requiring for that slope, if it is, because I think that does impact, if you pave it, all of a sudden now, you're sending that water down a little faster because it's on impervious surface instead of pervious, and then it's going to get to a point where it's impervious, and is that going to be a place that you've got your catch basin, but if somebody reviewed it to make sure that that's going to be adequate to pick up like the kind of storms that we've been having the last two months? Those are things I would personally, knowing what we've seen on a couple of other properties and how much of a problem this stuff has been, I would rather head it off now and have another meeting about it if necessary, rather than being here...
We're trying to have another meeting.
During construction and having problems.
We need to know what sort of a plan we're going to have about that, Bill.
One of the questions that Cheryl's asking is about the pavement itself. All of the improvements, whether it's drainage or pavement, is all on the applicant's half of the private way?
Only half of it?
If you have that plan, and if you take and you measure out, it's the third page. If you go to the, if you measure out using their scale, that blue line right here is the twenty-foot mark going up, it's a forty-foot right-of-way?
All right, so maybe what, maybe would help me is if you stake it, and I'll go out and take a look on site.
What that does is that leaves Mr. Cook's driveway alone. It allows the pavement to be matched, and it goes away from Mr. Cook, it all goes towards the new house on Lot B.
So I still think, I would like to have it staked and be able to go see it in the field to understand it properly.
Would the board consider a site visit, and then, the neighbors that would be most impacted could be there to...
I think that, I think that that's an excellent suggestion, and why don't we do it?
Sure, I think that's a great idea, too, and I do agree with April. I would like to hear more from the Beach Street residents about their thoughts on it. I remember, you brought this six, eight months ago. I remember going to the neighborhood, and I did feel like it was, it was actually a nice, it was a nice neighborhood, and that you did feel like it was almost a step back in time, kind of Mayberry-ish, and the street itself I'm talking about. And I have, I live on a street, and we deliberately, it's a private way, we deliberately keep potholes so that we don't have people flying down the road, so I understand some of what you're talking about, and I do want to keep that charm, if you will, that you have there. So I am interested in hearing more, and I think it's a helpful process for you, I imagine, and for us as well. So I am happy to spend more meetings on this, if it's at all helpful, to bring us to a consensus, so thank you.
And the neighbors should talk about what they, what they want, because what the neighbors want is pretty important. And there obviously are, it may be different opinions, but there's probably a reasonable middle ground that people can live with.
And to that point, I mean, I heard some enthusiasm about improving the property, which is great, so I don't think we want to belabor this till kingdom come, but I think we just have to make sure that we get all the details right so we don't have mistakes later and regrets later. So I hope in a few meetings, we can move this along, but make sure we have the time we need to make the right decisions.
Well, I would honor what Brian...
Brian, did you want to say something?
We had, we had static coming from the...
My only input is that from a length standpoint, I think it would be great to improve the road, but I'm honestly indifferent, and I think that should be left up to the neighbors as to what the extent of the length of the road is improved, but my position remains as it did at the beginning of the hearing. Fifteen-foot roadway with no sidewalk is going to be a non-starter for me, so hopefully we can make some progress on that.
I don't know if you've seen, seen the street, Brian, I know you travel a lot, but it's kind of flat on both sides of the, as I recall.
Once you get done...
I have been out there, Denny, and I just, I firmly believe that on a subdivision application, we have to be very careful with precedent and with waivers, and I also am a firm believer in stitching as much of the community together with sidewalks as we can, so I, I'm going to be pretty pressed to bend on this position. I've been to the site, I actually went a day and in the, in the daytime and in the evening.
All right, I think that the, the non-paved sidewalk is something that will probably work here. And fifteen, sixteen feet would seem to me, probably would be adequate, and how long it should be, I, there are things to talk about, but I think that, I think that if we do talk about them, we'll probably get to a resolution.
Is there a consensus for a one-site visit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I think that rather than just a sidewalk, we will have it a meeting so that people can, can talk while we're out there. In other words, a sidewalk, generally, you say, "This is this, this is this." You don't have any discussion, whereas if we have a meeting on the site, people can discuss the issues. And it may be a little chaotic, but it might be quite successful. So why don't we try and see how that works? What's a good time? It depends on the weather, but...
A lot.
I propose six o'clock before the next April 12 meeting. That would be, then we don't have to move around schedule, so that would be my suggestion, and then we can move ourselves back over to Town Hall.
I think that, that sounds like a good suggestion. What do you think, people?
Fine with me.
We might be a little short on daylight at that point in time, so maybe a little earlier might be...
So you're thinking that, it's really, I can do it at...
After daylight savings, yeah.
Daylight savings time is Saturday.
All right.
We're bringing forward.
Oh, it's already happening. Okay, great.
I guess that's right, it'll be, it'll be light enough.
So six o'clock on April 12?
Yeah. Out of, in front of the, when we post it, we'll post it in front of...
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Is that the number?
Yes, it is the number fifteen.
Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Very good.
All right, well, I think that, let's see how this works. Thanks for everyone coming in, and I think we'll get there.
Alex, there's a question?
One more thing, sorry. Knowing now that the construction's going to be delayed, if the committee could review, when you do the site visit, just to get your opinion on maybe some initial cleanup being done at the property? There's no fencing, it's very dangerous right now with all the debris that's in the yard, so knowing now that it's going to be delayed with construction, which I'm all for, by the way, if just there could be some initial cleanup being done in the yard?
I think that it would, your client would be well-advised to do some cleanup because he'll make a better impression.
Including pest control. Thank you.
Actually, one of the issues at the meeting the other night was rodents. So the other day, yesterday, I believe, I went to the Board of Health, and they have a protocol for demolition of a structure, including a pest inspector, and then an inspector for hazardous waste, asbestos, and then all kinds of different, there's a whole sheet of, and I thought I had brought the list, but it's available at the Board of Health and they're, on top of that, with respect to ruins and hazardous waste, and also...
You hear the concern, and I think you recognize it, and you understand that if you ignore it, we will remember that. Okay. So we're continuing, yes?
Just one second, I commented to Ellen about the cleanup, there's quite a bit of work to be done, specifically around rodents, and also, I'm just wondering, when it does come time for construction, if there's any mitigation of dust or any, any issues regards the demolition.
I believe that's one of the items on the Board of Health punch list protocol, so that's available at the Town Hall. If you, my email address is on the plan, so if you want to send me, I can, I can send you a copy of that.
Okay. Thanks for coming in. We're continuing this hearing until April 12 at six P.M. at, what number is it?
Fifteen.
Sixteen Mathos.
Fifteen.
Fifteen Mathos, in front of fifteen Mathos. Okay.
Would you like steak now?
Okay, thanks.
Milton Hoosier Club. It isn't the Milton Hoosier Club, it's Kelly Trust LLC, but it once was the Milton Hoosier Club.
Yes, it was, and it may be the Milton Club again.
Chairman, members of the board, Ned Corcoran, here with Peter Kelly, who is the principal of Kelly Trust LLC, which is the current owner of the property at 193 Central Avenue, is the property that was formerly the Milton Clubhouse for the Milton Hoosier Club. Mr. Kelly purchased the property, closed on it January 19th, and begun a process, a very public process, associated with plans to redevelop the club, restore the club, and redevelop the clubhouse for the benefit of the town and for himself, obviously, but doing it as a, on a nonprofit basis. He's going to create a nonprofit entity to be called the Milton Club, Milton Club, Inc., and it will be a nonprofit club, the purpose of which is to acquire... and it will be a nonprofit club, the purpose of which is to acquire, restore, preserve, operate and maintain the clubhouse building. It's a historic building and to run functions for the purpose of generating revenue to preserve the club as an asset for the town and to make the building available to the extent possible for community-based uses as well as for weddings and the like. So it'll operate it as a nonprofit rather than as a for-profit with all revenues to be generated to be put back into the preservation of the club. It is a very expensive process. Mr. Kelly purchased the property for a million and a half dollars, which was roughly its fair market value. If you divide the property into three buildable lots, you could assume each would be worth somewhere north of a half a million, so that was probably a fair purchase price. But he's got to, in order to be able to preserve, restore the club, do things, he needs to be able to generate some initial revenue through the sale of a lot. And he also has a settlement associated with an adverse possession claim that was bought, brought against the Housak Club while the purchase and sale was pending by the Atwoods who live on the far west of the end of the property. So the property is substantially rectangular with a little bit of a triangle that jogs off to the left, to the west, excuse me, to the east from Columbine Road. Property is abutted by a family named Atwood. They have lived next door for approximately fifteen years and they and their predecessors were using a portion of the rear of that triangle for a driveway turnaround and for other amenities with their property. That piece of the triangle was essentially on the other side of the tennis court and there was a fence. And we think that the members of the club simply lost track of the fact that they owned property on the other side of the tennis court. In fact, the Atwood's driveway runs right along the edge of that property line. So a year ago, when Mr. Kelly signed the purchase and sale agreement, we had a survey of the property done and a title done and we discovered that there was in fact an encroachment on the property. Notified the Housak Club of that fact, they issued a cease and desist order and the Atwood's filed suit in the land court claiming title to that property under adverse possession. Mr. Kelly, the purchase was, the agreement was entered into a year ago. The agreement provided that the club would retain ownership through December 15th, so it would be able to use the club as a revenue generator for the balance of the calendar year. We continued the closing until January because of the land court action to see if that matter could be resolved. It was not resolved as of the date that Mr. Kelly had to take title, which was the 19th of January. He'd had to take it with, subject to the lawsuit or walk away. He did not want to walk away, so he closed, immediately picked up the phone and called the Atwoods and said, "Give you all 7,200 square feet. We'll settle it right now." And they settled it. So this A&R lot is, the purpose of it is to create three lots. One is identified as parcel one, it is 7,200 square feet. It's the triangular piece of property on the, on the easterly side of the property, furthest away from the clubhouse. And that, it will be conveyed to the Atwoods in accordance with the settlement reached in the land court. The second, which is Lot B, is 20,011 square feet with 100 feet of frontage on Columbine Road, is a conforming lot under requirements of the town's Residence B zoning bylaw and Mr. Kelly intends to market that lot and assuming that he secures a permit to operate the clubhouse on Lot A as a nonprofit from the Board of Appeals, he will sell Lot B. He'll market it and sell it and take the revenue from that sale, pay down some of the mortgage and invest the balance of the funds into the redevelopment of the clubhouse. The clubhouse itself, the goal is to preserve and manage and operate the clubhouse. The clubhouse is a very interesting structure. Most of us have been in it at some point or another. You are invited to a neighborhood meeting on March 21, which is two weeks from yesterday. Wednesday, we've invited the selectmen, invited the neighborhood back to a second neighborhood meeting. We had a first one on February 20th. We want everybody to come in, see the building. We'll be able to have access to the basement area to see the type of work that is being planned for the basement, but it is a significant and interesting structure. There is a gracious entryway that you come in off of the, from the front that faces the corner. There's a large ballroom with very tall ceilings and a full stage used to conduct theater and other things in that stage. And beyond the stage, there's a, are two, side by side, two-story squash courts that are entered from the basement level at the far end of the building. There is a caterer's kitchen that will be restored and available for caterers to come in as the service functions and a couple of other smaller rooms, reception rooms and the like. Mr. Kelly has spent a significant amount of money to date, really on cosmetic improvements to the first floor. He's replastered, repainted, retrimmed, redoing the floors, really doing a significant amount of work on that first floor in preparation for what we anticipate will be the special permit that would be granted by the Board of Appeals to allow him to utilize that, hopefully as soon as May for weddings and similar functions. So we'll be applying really on two phases for permits to utilize the building. The first will be applied, will apply as soon as we get a denial letter from the Building Commissioner. We'll apply for a special permit as a club under Section 3 of the bylaw to continue what is essentially a pre-existing non-conforming, it was under zoning, and to allow him to operate the first floor with the patio and the lawn area available to the outdoor portions of functions, all under some very tight requirements for the time of, time, you know, when and how music can be played inside and outside, parking and use of police details and other parking attendants to make sure the parking is being done safely and not invasively within the neighborhood and other things. We've asked the neighbors, received some comment and we've asked them for more comment, really on the types of issues that we need to be responding to with respect to the permit application. Assuming that we get a permit for the use of Phase 1, Mr. Kelly has engaged an architect to really dig into what he can do in the basement. The basement is full size of the building, but it is in very difficult condition. It's old. There's an old boiler. There was an old two-lane bowling alley in the basement that he's ripped out because it was in such poor condition. There is, there is the dressing room below the stage that was used for changing costumes for theater productions. In fact, there's an old handwritten sign tacked to the bathroom that says, "Please do not flush during performances." And it's got to go back to the 40s or 50s, still tacked to the door of the bathroom. And then beyond that are the two squash courts. Mr. Kelly's plan is to repurpose that basement, create classroom, dance studio type space. There's a theater, an after-school theater group is interested in leasing space. There's things like NSYNC Dance Studio. There's yoga. Other community groups looking for space like that to me, to have access to. Milton is devoid of this type of space. We lost the Milton Women's Club, which was available for functions, we've now lost the Housak Club, which is available for functions. So the idea is the first floor will be function space, the basement area would be available for these community-based organizations to rent space. The walls might be movable based on the types of times and when different entities are using space, but that's the desire is to completely use the upstairs and the downstairs. Now, that requires handicapped accessibility, potentially elevator or a lift between the first floor and the basement, may trigger sprinkler requirements for the building. There's some very expensive, significant upgrades to the, to the systems of the building based on latest building codes that have to be addressed and so the interior buildout is going to be significant. The last thing I would just say is that there is a gravel parking lot on that northeastern side of the building. There's a handicap ramp into the building from that area, but it's gravel, it's muddy, it's dusty. It's a difficult place for people to park if they're dressed nicely and coming to a function. Mr. Kelly is going to pave that lot, put in some stormwater detention for that. Again, that's expense to bring that parking area up to improve it. And so that's the plan. We're asking the board this evening to authorize endorsement of this A&R plan to create parcel one so that we can transfer that parcel to the Atwoods, create Lot B so that Mr. Kelly has a chance to sell that, to generate revenue, to knock down his mortgage and to pay, to invest in the building and to create Lot A, which would retain the existing building. And as I say, if the, if we're successful before the Board of Appeals, property will be conveyed to the Milton Club, Inc., which is a nonprofit. The nonprofit will operate and maintain the function facility. So that, I'll pause and ask if you have any questions or comments or...
So has the nonprofit been established?
We're getting ready to file it.
And shouldn't, if, so if the purpose is funding the nonprofit, shouldn't the nonprofit be the applicant?
Well, I'm not sure that that matters. Currently, the property owner is Kelly Trust. The plan goes to the division of the lots. He's not going to convey the property into the nonprofit until he secures a permit from the, from the Board of Appeals. If he doesn't get the permit, then he's got to do something else with the property and there's no purpose to operate it as a nonprofit.
All right. Denny?
Some neighbors have reached out to us about parking issues all the way down Central Avenue on both sides. They've talked about fire hydrants and driveways being blocked at various times with the previous owner, the Housak Club. I'm wondering if it almost makes sense to keep the lot as a parking area?
We put that to, we had a large meeting at the club on April 20th and we put that to the neighborhood.
February 20th?
February 20th. Thank you. We put that to the neighborhood. Do they want to see a change in the green space? And they prefer to leave, well, at least with respect to Lot A, leave the space green rather than add parking to it. There's no economics to this deal as a nonprofit or otherwise if he can't sell Lot B. He's not going to be able to hold on to that for parking. The history of the facility is that it was woefully underparked. Can't create new parking. We do agree that the prior owner, particularly in the last few years, as the club was preparing to sell the property and was maximizing revenue without paying attention to how the operation was affecting their neighbors, that they didn't pay attention to how people park cars. We're saying that there will be a parking attendant available at all times, that for events in excess, we're saying right now 100 people, but maybe that number's less, that at a certain level, there would be a police detail. When the club had police details, parking issues were substantially controlled, but often the police details would come just in time for the start of an event and leave as soon as the event was over. We're committing to having that detail available a half hour before and a half hour afterwards so that as people are filtering in, someone's paying attention to the parking issue and as people are leaving, they've been paid attention to as well. The other issue, another issue that we've heard is that as people are leaving, sometimes they take that last drink and they wander out with that last drink and they're tossing cans or bottles over fences into the yard. We're preparing a very strict set of rules and regulations, one of which is that, you know, drinks will be, will not be able to consume a beer or a cup of wine from a bottle, has to be, or a can, it must be taken in a cup. And we will have, he will have a cleanup staff that will work through the end of the evening to make sure that they are policing the area relative to litter and other things. Club manager will have, the neighbors will have access to the club manager's cell phone. There'll be a club manager on-site during all events, either manager or supervisor at our meeting. The neighbors will have access to their cell phones so that there's an issue, if there's an issue of noise, they can, you know, and it's, they can get a call right away and they'll be addressed.
Alex, may I speak for a moment?
Yes.
It seems like we're kind of way into the weeds here on an A&R application for a use and, you know, this is a simple A&R application, which we only have like three or four things we can consider. And I'd remind the board and the neighbors and the applicant for that matter that this just redefines the property lines and frankly sets up a smaller parcel, which will be, which will far more restrict what the building can ultimately do because of the restrictions on area. So I do think we should limit our conversation as much as possible with the A&R because the use is really a discussion for special permit under the DBA and our further discussions later down the line.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to Cheryl and then April.
Did you have a follow-up to Brian's? Go ahead.
I mean, I don't disagree with you, Brian, but Ned just spent 15 minutes talking about nonprofit uses of the Housak, so that's why I brought it up.
And I just wanted to, I was thinking the same thing about the A&R, but I am, I did want to make a comment in a statement and ask about the historic. I, when I heard this property was for sale, I was anticipating that someone would buy it and tear it down and put up single-family homes and been lamenting that we've been losing anything that was in amenities such as this. So I've been hoping that someone would buy it and see a way, find a way to make it work as an event space that could continue and yet would take into concern, or into consideration the concerns of the neighbors. So I'm glad to hear that you're working on those things. I'm curious, what year was this built?
1933.
And has the Historic Commission talked about it?
We did.
Okay. Thank you.
We met with the Historical Commission. We haven't engaged in a formal process with them because Peter hasn't filed for a demolition permit. He may do that in part to trigger their, any more formal action on their part, but we understand that they would deem it to be historic. We would welcome that. But if, you know, if we're unable to secure the special permit, then presumably the building at some point is razed and single families are worse.
So if you don't mind, Alex, may we ask the member of the Historic Commission who's here whether she would like to comment on the historic value of the building?
I don't want to comment on the historic value of the building. I think we...
Why don't you come up and speak, tell the viewing public what the story is?
The story is, as I can tell it, I think we're, our language is that the building is of historic interest and should be preferably preserved. And I do have some questions. When we had our meeting, I'm not sure of the date, but end of January?
End of February.
In any case, a few weeks ago. It seemed very premature. I got the impression that the interest was in preserving the clubhouse and... And I tend to get a little picky about language. I tend to be very picky about language, and I'm not going to pick on you personally, but you said redevelop the clubhouse, which is different from preserving the clubhouse. And I think our concerns have to do with the fact that at this point where things are very early in the process, the concerns are financial. I mean, can it really happen? And if you have to put in an elevator, does that all of a sudden trigger the thought that maybe, maybe you need to add another floor, and then all of a sudden the character of the, of the existing building changes? So we do have some real concerns about what the plans might be. I would be interested in knowing the name of your architect. I would be interested in looking at your numbers. And then finally, I would be interested in learning what the provisions for ensuring, following any intentions of preserving the historic character of the building would be. I'm not sure what the sanctions might be or what our recourse is if, in fact, the character of the building does change in the process of developing a new, I guess I shouldn't say new, developing the property as a function hall, right? That, I think, the language that I heard a few weeks ago.
So I think I can respond to that. We described it then, we're more specific now, is that there's no physical change to the building, not adding floors that would require additional permits. We're not proposing to change the physical nature layout of the first floor of the building. We're not going to add a second floor to the building. If we're required to go put an elevator in to access the basement for the, for the purposes that, for which the basement would be built out, the question whether it would be, whether it would be economically feasible to do that.
Yeah, and that's...
If it's not, we don't build out the basement. So the real issue is, is going to be is whether it's, whether it's economically feasible at the end of the day to manage this building as a nonprofit.
Right.
For the purpose of providing functions, both for rentals and for community-based activities. You know, all the PTOs have used that building for their functions. Milton Library Foundation's used that, the hospitals use that for galas and balls. There's a history of Milton-based community groups using that space, and he wants to continue to be able to do that. To do that, he also has to generate significant revenue through weddings and other private functions. And if he can't do it, then quite frankly, the building will have to come down, and some other use to the property will have to take place, whether it's single-family or something other that's available to do it. We think the only opportunity to preserve the building is to use the building in the way it's been used.
So I guess my point is, is there any new information? Is there any, any further progress in looking, actually looking at the building and figuring out what it would cost to do what you think you need to do?
I was going to spend a half a million dollars on restoration.
Can you...
Well, we're starting with the first floor. He has painted, blue-boarded, done the floors, just done all cosmetic things, all of which does not require a building permit. It's been close communication with the building commissioner about what he's been doing and what he is doing. It's all cosmetic. It's all, the first floor is in really nice shape. It's to make it presentable and usable as new function space.
Gotcha. Just a basic question. Is there any more information?
No.
Okay, all right.
Why don't you identify yourself for the bracket? I don't think you, you did.
I'm Linda Weld. I'm on the Historic Commission.
Perfect, thank you.
And what I'm looking for is anything else that would be of use to us in further discussion. We're going to be meeting again next week, and, you know, the more we could learn, the better we'd be able to support you.
We will have a complete, Kristen Daly is my new Director of Communication. She'll be in touch with you to give you the forward plan for what we're working on today.
Great.
Now, Brian is saying that this is a A and R application, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the use of the building. And, yes?
So I do have a question about the A and R itself, but I also want to say, when the applicant comes in and opens up this whole box of tricks, I think we have an opportunity to respond.
I think it was absolutely appropriate to hear what the proposed use is.
I agree.
It simply is that it doesn't enter into our decision.
I agree. So just one comment about that. I mean, if you don't know the economic feasibility of rehabbing this structure, I question whether it's premature to try to split up the lot when you might be able to do something more desirable in this beautiful space, if it turns out not to be. But if you could, can you pull up a Google map?
Simply creating the A and R doesn't, it just creates the opportunity to sell the lot. Until it's sold, it's still part of the...
Okay.
What do you want me to get?
Can you pull up the, a Google lot? I just want to clarify what, a Google map of the lot, because I see, it looks like there's some fence line down the Atwood property line, and I'm trying to figure out which line that is. Is that including parcel one? I guess to the right of parcel one on our plan?
Yes.
So the 7,200 square feet is within that fence on their side?
7,200 square feet is this triangle.
And their fence is on what, which one of those lines?
The fence was on this...
Okay.
Property line. This other parcel appeared to be part of their property.
Okay. And then there's a...
The driveway comes straight up the edge of that.
Then there's a stub of a fence?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, well, it looks like it might be here? I'm just trying to picture whether it's on this line?
Right. That's on just the other side of the line. That's part of the old tennis court.
The, the Google map just looks very tight. Okay, I see. So this is the fence line right here?
Yes.
Which includes the 7,200 square feet?
Correct.
And then this is the stub that I was talking about. Does that run along the proposed A and R lot boundary?
It runs 10 feet to the left of that.
Okay, so it's in. That, that explains it. Thank you.
Okay, now, our, and then we'll see if there's anyone out there who wants to be heard on this, but what we're doing here is, for people who were around when we were doing the subdivision of the previous time, that was a procedure specified in the subdivision control law. And the subdivision control law says, you don't have to do, go through this process if you have a lot on an existing street which has adequate frontage, that is, the frontage required by the zoning, which in this case is 100 feet. Two of the lots have adequate frontage, and they both have adequate area. One lot is not a buildable lot and would have to be so labeled. And if we were to endorse this plan, our endorsement would not constitute determination of zoning compliance. That would be something else. So the, if the building is non-compliant as to use, as to the, the distance from lot lines, our endorsement would not have, would not cure that. All it does is create a lot, and until, and unless the lot is sold, it will continue to be part of this parcel. So that's what we're about here tonight. And who would like to be heard? Yes?
My name is John McMahon. I live at 106 Houston Avenue in Milton. I deal with, next door to me is the Teskies, and they are allowed to expand, expand, expand. The same applies to here. The clubhouse will be allowed to expand, expand, expand. Now, I understand your picture of today is not what your picture is of 10 years from now. Traffic is the biggest issue we have in this town. We have issues with the people, not only the laws are set out there, everybody knows them, but the problem is, is people don't abide by them. They don't care about them. I get blocked in and blocked out of my house every single day of the week. There's not one day of the week that goes by there that I don't get blocked in and blocked out. I was coming to a public hearing tonight to speak to you guys. I got delayed 10 minutes, so I couldn't make that public hearing. That's a fact. You need the lot to stay the same size. In fact, you need the lot to be bigger, to put the proper traffic parking into the lot. And it's my opinion that these non-conforming use properties need to be looked at throughout the whole of the, the town. And those, those non-conforming use lots need to be addressed differently than they've ever been addressed before, because what's happening is, is people are allowed to expand, 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 and it has an adverse effect on the people who are butted, constantly butted. Every single day of the week, there's issues as a result of commercial activities, if you live in a residential area. I'm not talking about a commercial area. I'm talking about a residential area. Now, what I'd like to see what this lot is, I would like to see the town consider a transfer of development rights, where this man is allowed, transfer his development rights off this property, and transfer it into another area of the town where greater density is acceptable. That greater density would give someone else the ability to redevelop something closer to the train station, or redevelop these mansions that are down there. But it's not happening, because the town don't care about the issues of around the residents. We're the ones going to be affected by it.
You'll have to recall that you're, this is, the Board of Appeals is going to determine this matter, not the Planning Board. I mean, I've just discussed that...
I make it clear to you, I live with her on a daily basis, and I, I understand where you're coming from in relation to this department represents this, this department represents that, but the fact of the matter is, is you all sit in your arms. I've objected to 7-Eleven coming into this town, and objected for a simple reason, because they're overgrown. If they put the proper infrastructure in, I wouldn't have any progress. And the same applies here. The proper infrastructure needs to go in to the location.
This is a zoning discussion. We're discussing, I, you know, I understand that you're not happy with the situation.
No, sir, I've not been happy for the last 10 years.
I get it, and we hear you, but I, you know...
This is a typical example of development that comes into the town.
It may be, but we're not discussing non-conforming use.
This is a non-conforming.
It doesn't matter. We're discussing division of the lot, the, the clubhouse...
You allow a division of that lot go through, sir. You're going to allow greater headaches down the road.
If it doesn't go through at the Board of Appeals, it's going to have to be used as a single-family house. That's the case.
And that might be the best use for it.
All that may be, but we have to see what happens. Cheryl?
Can, maybe, Alex, if you could explain how the law works on the A and R for people who are unfamiliar with it, because we, we have certain requirements. We can't just deny things if it meets the requirements of the A and R.
I understand that, but you have to understand, a lot of decisions are being made by the community, and being made for the communal, for the community's interest, but they haven't been taken into consideration the butters' issues. And what happens with a place like this, someone's going to live beside this, and 100 cars is going to show up one night, and it's going to have an adverse effect on what they do at nighttime. Right there.
I think what Alex is trying to...
Oh, I understand. This is a hearing for keeping and splitting the lot up into separate units. But the ball has to start somewhere.
Well, we do, but that is why we have what's known as citizen speak at the beginning.
And as I said, I was blocked out 10 minutes before I came here.
Okay, I get you. I hear you. This is, I understand this is an extended citizen speak.
Well, I wouldn't call it an extended citizen speak.
An extended time for citizen speak.
No, no, it's not. It's, it's related to, this is why I came here tonight. I came here tonight to express my opinion in relation to what happens in a non-conforming use property. And I agree, look, Matt, I, I don't get away of an entrepreneurial spirit. I think there should be a development down there similar to what the Tuckers, but I don't think it should be a smaller location. I think it should be the same location, and I think he should have the opportunity to transfer his development rights and put them somewhere else in the town. And I think that's the way to preserve the character of the town, and I think that's the way to move forward in the town. And I would applaud it, and I don't know if other people would applaud it, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. And we, well, we hear you.
I doubt it.
Well, now, we, I, we will, we will talk these things, talk about these things. Whether or not we solve them is something else, but we will, we will remember.
I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Lauren?
Yes.
We will remember.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Gillan. I live at 256 Central Ave.
Come on down and tell the people who you are and...
My name is Chris Gillan. I live at 256 Central Ave, so about five houses towards Turner's Pond from this property here.
Yeah.
My only concern right now is the communication going on with the neighbors. The only reason I'm here tonight is because one of my other neighbors put something through my door saying, "Get out here, something's happening on Central Ave." I knew the property was sold, but, I mean, being five houses away, I think I should be contacted by your group. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, director butters may be affected, but this traffic situation and all this goes all the way down the street, and they park right in front of my house, which is right near the crosswalk, so, you know, I just think an open communication a bit further down the road might work out for you guys. So that's all, I just wanted to state that.
The, one of the interesting things about the procedure of subdivision proven not required is that it doesn't legally require a hearing, although we try to, we try and get the word around in a, in a case such as this where people are, are interested, and you did, you did get word.
I got word, but perhaps in the future, you guys could have some sort of bylaw where it says they need to send out notification to whatever, draw a circle around their property, because, you know, not everyone goes online, or not everyone reads Milton Times and goes in the back and reads all the stuff that's happening. Some people are busy, and luckily, a neighbor came to me and said, you know, "Come here."
In a, in a case where there may be, may be neighborhood interest, we, we do rely sometimes on neighbors.
Right. I completely agree, but you can rely on the developer there. They're planning on developing my neighborhood. They can spend a couple dollars or walk the beat and knock on the door and say, "Hey, you know, this is my proposal," whatever. I have no problem with the green space on there, and I think it's a great idea that we're keeping something around here, but I do get affected by the old Husset Club, and granted, it wasn't every week, it wasn't every month. It might have been, you know, twice every four or five months if there was a, and I know he wants to do a lot more there, so I just think that in the future, there should be some sort of communication with somebody.
Okay.
Further down the road. I'll gladly give you my email or something if you'd like that.
Lauren, we've got a number of things to put up there.
Thank you.
Remember.
Part of the, the purpose of coming tonight and doing this tonight was to get on television and to explain so that people could see it. We have sent written invitations to the meeting we had on the 20th, to the circle of friendship, you know, the 300-feet circle around the property. There were more people there because other people brought neighbors as well. We've been to the selectmen last week. We're going back to another meeting that we're hosting on the 21st. We invited you, we invited the selectmen, we've invited the larger neighborhood group. We continue to do that, because, you're right, communication is important in giving people the opportunity to be heard. and giving people the opportunity to be heard is important. Otherwise, it's not effective.
Yeah.
This is more to your operations and your special permit. But one suggestion I have for you to think about with the larger events is satellite parking. And, you know, evenings and weekends, the public schools, parking lots are pretty much empty. Churches, sometimes churches. This is done in other communities where, you know, you run a shuttle bus between the satellite parking and the event space that could help ease the burden on the neighbors. So just something for you to look into, consider.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck in your job.
Okay.
In relation to parking, although I know that's not a big consideration in an A and R, but I did, I just want to understand, how many parking spaces do you have on the, on the current property?
I think it's, we had a preliminary parking layout done. I think there's something like 17 or 20 parking spaces.
You had mentioned 100 patrons, so-
No way to park any event on the property without creating a whole lot of additional parking. Just, it's a fact. Historically, Central Avenue has been the parking lot for this property. We are looking at other options. We've considered approaching the town about the ability to use the Turner's Pond parking area as perhaps as a satellite operation. There are, you know, specific issues that you have to look at with each one of those. But we are considering that. Parking, and how parking gets managed is going to be a significant issue. And it has been an issue, it's probably the number one issue. Second would be noise, to the extent that doors open during, while the DJ is playing. Noise, wuff, on a warm night. But, but the building is air-conditioned, and so the need to open doors should be limited.
So Alex, I would like to make a motion, if I may.
Okay, we want to make a motion to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval containing the following notations, additional notations. Endorsement, one will say endorsement does not constitute determination of zoning compliance. And the second is parcel one is not a billable lot.
That notation is on the plan.
What about?
It's within the box.
So small, I can't read it on that.
Well, I think I want you to make it bigger.
There's not a billable lot.
I see, I want to, I didn't, I, well, the size of the plan I got was-
I didn't give you a full-size.
Was rather, rather small. Okay.
Eleven by 17.
So, do we have that motion? Does anyone want to second it?
Second.
Do we have discussion now?
Now, we're going to have discussion.
If I may, since I made the motion, I recognize that there's still questions about how this might operate and work here. And I recognize that the Board of Appeal has jurisdiction for that, and that they may consider whether this lot should or should not be a part of this overall development. But I think in terms of our responsibility of whether this meets the requirements for the A and R, I don't think it's a question in my mind that it meets it. And I think we would be actually remiss if we, if we denied it.
That's what I was going to ask for. If we could just review the requirements for an A and R.
Okay, for an A and R, it has to have the requisite frontage on a street.
And the street has to be determined to be adequate.
No, if it's a public street, it can be annual street. And Central Avenue is a, yeah-
Columbine Road is the frontage.
Well, yes, it has to be real, real frontage. In other words, you have to be able to obtain access to the lot through the frontage. But it really, it's a, you look and you see if the lots have frontage. We usually look to see that they have area also, but these lots have both frontage and area. And the literature says that if you label a lot an "not a billable lot", that is adequate to take the place of not having requisite frontage.
Thank you. I've heard from a number of people who were not in favor of this A and R, so I just want to make sure the public knows that we are not in a position to reject it because it meets the requirements.
It's, to reject it would be to, would be to simply disregard the law.
And frivolously spend taxpayer money trying to defend our decision, which is illegal.
It just, it, we have to, we have to comply with the law. And this plan is entitled to an endorsement, and we're not saying anything about the future use of this property. We're not saying anything by this endorsement. We're simply saying, you're entitled to do this under the law. How you use it is something you're going to have to determine. You're either going to have to use the clubhouse as a single-family house, or you're going to have to get the Board of Appeals to approve something else.
Standing at the top of a fairly steep ski slope. We have stops along the way, and this is just one of them.
You have something, Bill?
I do. Is the first sentence below where it says Milton Planning Board acceptable to you? It says, "Planning Board endorsement does not reflect compliance with applicable zoning requirements."
Yeah, that's good. That's perfect.
So, Ned-
Well, I have, yeah, good. So, we can, you can amend your motion to just be a straightforward motion without, without adding a sentence.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
So I think what I heard, Ned, is that this isn't going to, like, go on the market tomorrow. That you're really waiting for a determination from the Board of Appeals before you decide whether or not to exercise these development rights.
No, Mr. Kelly's going to start to market it, but he's not going to, he's not going to enter into any, any purchase and sale agreement until we know which way we're going relative to the use of the property.
It won't be conveyed until after the Board of Appeals decision.
And when is that hearing?
Soon as we can get it.
Oh, it's not scheduled, okay.
Sometime in, we're hoping in mid-April.
Thanks.
So Alex, should you restate my motion?
Well, it's simply that you are moving to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval. And we've, that's, that's your motion, right?
That's my motion, yes.
Brian seconded it.
Brian, you seconded this, Brian?
Second again, yep.
Okay. And, you know, I think we all feel that you could have waited to do this, but you're legally entitled to do this. And whether we think that that was, it's a good idea, if you're legally entitled, that's sort of the end of the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, 161 Hillside, but who would have thought?
I'm Mark Peltzer. Yeah, so this guy's dead, he's like, he's a big owner of the property. So essentially, what we want to do is to repair the two stone pillars to the driveway. The original mortar is cracking and falling apart. Water erosion got into it, and the stones are kind of starting to expose. Some of the stones we had to put back into the pillars. Like, we didn't mortar anything, but they fell up, so we put it back in. The plan is to use the same stones, clean off the mortar and the moss that's there on them, and to put a-
A cap, a little bit of cap.
Blue stone cap on top of it, so it's not getting worse. Yeah, keep water from going into it and do the same kind of road that's done. And essentially, it's going to stay looking the same, same driveway width.
Same size, same opening, yeah.
So it's just at the very end?
Just those two pillars.
Two pillars, the front.
It's not getting any bigger?
No.
The two pillars that are there are, they're old. The idea is to take them down, rebuild them, mortar from the inside, not from the outside.
What do you mean, mortar from the inside, not the outside?
You won't see the mo-, right now, you drive by, you see the mortar, because they've been put back in, they had to mortar the rock in.
I see.
They'll take it out, they'll set the mortar on the inside, set the rocks into it, pour the mortar into the middle. It'll be grabbed from the back side.
Are these on town on property, or is this up?
It's right down the middle.
Right down the middle, uh-huh.
Half of that.
Half this. This side, this side is correct.
Another complicating.
Bill, how do you know, who's going to do the work?
We're going to, I'm going to do the work, yeah. Just going to remove it and put it back, same way that it is.
They're the homeowners.
Yeah.
Well, we do want, we do want it to end up looking the same.
Yes, yeah.
So, Bill will, and this is the application, I gather?
Yeah, is there a write-up?
This is page one.
Actually, we're going to try to put cap on top of it, so it's going to look a little different.
You want to put caps on it?
That would be nice, so that would be preventing from the water-
And then you want to put lights on top of the caps?
No, no, lights, nothing, just cap, like a blue stone cap, I don't know, the size is probably-
A blue stone cap?
We have a picture of a neighbor down the-
We saw the neighbor down the hillside. Like, they have something like this, like installed on, on top of the cap.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what the neighbor has.
Right, they have, they do have lanterns, don't they?
They have lights, we're not going to put lights, we're just going to cap it.
Would it be about that size, the, in terms of the blue stone cap?
Whatever the, the post is sized, the, you know, I believe it's about 40 inches.
I think the neighbor's posts are slightly wider than the ones that we have, but essentially, they'll be the same width of the, the posts on the finish.
About how big are those posts, would you say?
Like, probably 40 inch, I would say, 40 inch.
I haven't measured.
40 inch, probably, yeah, 39 or 40 inch. So the cap's going to be probably like inch above, around that.
Inch or field.
Inch each side. Just to prevent water not going to go over, going to go outside of the, the post.
More to the top edge.
Right, no, I just was trying to get a sense of how big the, the blue stone is, or how dominant the blue stone would appear, that's all.
Blue stone probably-
Their rocks are bigger than these, these are more like river rock. These are more field stone rock.
But would, so would you use a thicker blue stone than what we just had?
Same, probably two inch, same thing like a-
Because where your rocks are bigger aesthetically, you know, it might look better to have a thicker blue stone. Like, this is appropriate because the stones are smaller?
Mm-hmm. I can get something.
Yeah, I think, well, I think you probably can.
Well, blue stone is usually cut about, you're talking a special, special order.
If they can get it, I mean, I just think it would, it would be-
I just think you like to prevent this, so, you know, if we do it once, this is going to last like another, probably a few years or more.
Bill, you and Lauren, I presume are going to go and take pictures of what is out there and do a few measurements. Someone's got to do it, because we've got to, what we get has to be what's there.
19-1, 19 feet, one inch. What's going to be there when you finish?
Yeah.
19-1.
Yeah.
Because the bigger the piece of stone, in terms of area, sorry, April.
That's okay.
The thinner it is, the more susceptible to crack it will be. The smaller it is, it can be thinner. The bigger it is, the thicker it needs to be. So that's why I asked about the size. So, and you, it's not just a visual thing, but it's also performance on the stone. So, if you're going to look into it, if you're going to get sizes, we'll talk to Bill about it.
Okay, Jen.
So, I have no problem with what you're suggesting, but I, our regs call for Concom and Historic to review this and weigh in. Have you checked with-
Both of them have been, both of them have been sent copies. There are no Concom issues.
But did we check to see if they have feedback?
I did check with Concom, I did not check with Historic.
So I think according to our own regs, we need to do that.
I do know that we sent it to Mr. O'Donnell.
I can't see that this is going to be majored since it's pretty recent.
I mean, like I said, I don't have any problem with what they're proposing, but I'm not the Historic Commission. And if we have that in our regs, I think we need to follow our own regs.
Well, I, I think that, my view is that we need to reward these applicants for waiting until quarter to 10.
I agree, and I think we should maybe, maybe make sure before we come before with our next scenic application that we do confirm with Concom and Historic if they have any feedback.
It seems to me we can, if we get the, we get the pictures of these things and get the measurements of these things, and then-
This is what they're talking about falling apart.
They have some pictures, the bottom is like they're falling apart. Basically, you can remove each rock between the, you know, the mortar, it's like, you know-
Then we could, we could write it up and have something enforceable. And you can get to work. Because I think that, why did you sigh?
10 minutes to 10?
It's been a long wait.
All right. So, what do you think?
I think what you suggest is good.
I think that's the way to do it. We'll get some pictures, we'll get some measurements, and you're going to be required to make it look like it looks now. And you can, we're going to say use thick, use-
Better than what it looks.
Use thick blue stone, or, or if you can't get it, you can use other blue stone. Okay? I mean, they're probably not going to find it. Why don't you, Cheryl, locate some blue stone?
I think we're going to have to make sure that these meetings end before 10, bro.
All right. So shall we take that as a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second, do we have any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming again. Okay, 475 Adams Street. Continue to 315. Does anyone, does anyone here to consider that? Okay, continue to 315-18.
So, I do have a question, Alex, if I may, in light of the, the street tree discussion earlier in the landscape plan. I had noticed that there was evergreen, like, along the street. I think it was evergreen. It's not on street tree, per se. But does the, do we have anyone who looks at the continuity of the trees that are, like, in the business district? Or, I don't know, it just seems to me like that kind of a tree facing the street in, in that location, it seems like it belongs over on Hillside Street.
Where?
The plan that was sent to us. I was just wondering if we have anybody who comments on landscape. For example, some jurisdictions that I work in, the landscape plans that are submitted are reviewed- are reviewed by a landscape architect on the authority having jurisdiction side. So, something to ponder.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, which tree in the commercial district?
It's on this, the plan that we received today, did you get a chance to see your email today?
Oh, no, no, so I have no idea.
So pick a look.
Thankfully, I'm like, what am I talking, what am I missing here? Okay, sorry.
And we can talk about it next time, but I just throw it out there for people to think about. In light of our tree discussion.
Oh, this is related to four seventy-five Adams.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we're continuing four seventy-five Adams to three fifteen, what, what time, oh, what time are we continuing it to?
Um, well, can I say seven fifteen? Seven fifteen.
Okay. Now, the status update on Pulte is that I went out there and, uh, checked the, uh, the cutting near the Mulligan, uh, lot line, where they're going to build a berm to, um, to--
Infiltration basin.
Berm to, uh--
The infiltration basin.
To hold the water in the detention basin, and it appears to be cut just where the berm is supposed to be, and then they're gonna vegetate the top of the berm, so that seems okay. Uh, Pulte is, uh, there are a lot of ticks out there, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, they, they seem to be, they seem to be, uh, doing what they're supposed to be doing.
I, I took some pictures, I, I did the same thing you did, Alex, I took some pictures of, these are the before, this is the Mulligan wall, um, and then we'll get to the after, so this is what it's, it's like now, so at first I was quite concerned, um, it's just, I, I had thought initially, and I went back to my notes, I had thought there was gonna be a thirty-foot buffer, um, between the stone wall and the, and the berm, but you're recollect, you're, you looked at the permit or the special permit amendment?
I looked at this, the, the plan, and, uh, I thought I brought it with me.
I think I did bring Pulte plans with me.
I thought I, I, you know, I remember packing it up, but--
Alex?
Oh, well, I have a--
You have a small, this--
I have it. I just don't understand what happens. Oh, here it is. That's, uh--
Okay, that's an enlargement, okay, so this-- Can you, can you show me this in relation to this? See what I'm looking at, the stone wall?
This is, this is the stone wall here.
Okay.
And this is the line. And this Mulligan here. This is, this is, this is the line.
That's the line of how far they can go in?
Yeah.
And this is the stone wall, the blue, that, what's black?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the right spot, right? Yeah.
Oh, so they're gonna replant that afterward, is that, if they're gonna replant that, is that what they're gonna do, they're gonna build it up?
Yeah, the toe of the slope comes in right along that red line.
Yeah.
Because you see from this picture, it looked like, so this wasn't gonna remain, this is gonna be replanted, is that what I'm hearing from you? Because--
This gets replanted, these, there's twenty-three of these things going that way.
Well, it does say right here, existing vegetation to remain, the question is, what's the dimension, because there's not a dimension on it. No, it goes right to there.
Here's the limit of work.
Yeah, but that, that looks, the, to, um, Denny's point, that looks, it looks closer here than it does here.
But, these are the ones, these are the plans we signed.
Yeah, but, and there's no dimensions. This was the, this was from the last discussion, though. Maybe this was the very last discussion.
These are the ones we signed. It's right here.
There's a ten foot there, so one inch equals ten feet. So, if, one inch equals ten feet, then that's ten feet. You would see a ten-foot buffer along the stone wall?
No, it's six.
I'm looking at that, that says a ten foot.
Here's the property line, that's the wall. There's the hay bale line right there.
Yeah, but you can't tell what scale that is, one inch equals a hundred, come on.
But that's it there. That may be what it's gonna look like--
Well--
--in the end.
Yeah, but no, but in the end, it's, I, I agree with Andy, it says right here, existing. The problem is, this is not tied in with a dimension with this.
But I don't, I don't have any idea where that is.
That's what I'm saying, it's not tied-- Right there where it is. So that's supposed to be right here. No, it's like right here.
It's right where these pictures are, see? There's no--
It'd be up here.
Well, according to that, it's within the, if that is that, if we're looking like that, right?
Well, if it's an inch, it's a hundred feet back.
Yeah, so we're looking at right there.
No, what are these plans? A hundred feet back has to be--
Excuse me, thank you.
I'm just looking graphically, if that's that, that's that, so maybe it's there. It's not way back here, because it's off, it would've been past that. As careful as we thought we were with requesting information here--
These are--
--this didn't make it to what was signed.
That's not on those plans.
And I find that unfortunate. Yeah, it's done, see what's done? Yeah. I, I, I thought, my notes from the meeting where this was handed out by the developer was it was gonna be a thirty-foot buffer, but I understand that some of it was gonna be rebuilt, but I, I thought-- The, where's the, whose property is the wall on? Frank Mulligan sold it, and it was Frank Mulligan's property. I don't, I don't, I haven't met the new buyer. So the wall, the stone wall's on that owner, but that's--
It's presumably the lot line.
It's presumably, I think it's the lot line. Okay. So they went by this point?
Not leaving.
Okay, well, you're gonna have to vote to keep going.
Okay, we can keep going, but I, it's just one of these things that I, I, I just have a-- You know, another, um, I think lesson, or to think about going forward on something as critical as that, where the dimension on here is like, you know, pretty challenging to determine unless we actually ask them to put a dimension on it and tie it to that. The other thing is just have them stake it before they do any work.
They did stake it.
Before they cut everything down?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what that plan here is, Alex's plan.
It's a stake plan?
That's the stake.
So who reviewed it then?
I did.
Okay.
And engineering did.
And you guys felt it, it met these plans?
This follows right along what these--
So if we had something like that, which put a dimension, then you'd have--
That wasn't in--
I hear ya.
Here.
But I'm just talking about improving, continuing to make improvements as we do our special permits, is we-- See, this was the very last discussion we had, so this was the final. But, but, but Bill's right in that we didn't get it into, into these, unfortunately.
This is the, this is the set that everybody uses, this is the set that's in the trailer.
So when we, when we finalize, when we sign off on the special permit--
But you didn't sign off on that.
Yeah, but that was our understanding, that, our understanding was that that was accurately depicting what we were getting on these plans.
I don't know if it makes-- That is that.
But of course, you know--
Paul's points.
What, what you're saying is simply that I don't remember that being an issue, so I didn't include it in the special permit, but if someone had picked it up, we could have put it in, um, but it wasn't picked up, I didn't, you know, I didn't recall that, uh, that this, there was any measurement on this at all, I thought it was simply sort of a cross-section, um, a, a conceptual rather than a, than a, than an actual rendering.
There, there was a discussion--
We had a--
--by Mr. Mulligan, who said, how come I don't get the, how come I don't get the no-touch zone? And the issue came back that in that particular corner, it couldn't be done in order to get in the infiltration basin. Also, the trees, X amount of the big trees in the middle will be staying, twenty-three new trees will be added--
Okay, but--
And it stays as open space.
It's ten o'clock, shall we, uh, vote to go to ten fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, we have that motion?
A second, Cheryl.
Bill, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ten fifteen.
Okay, so I understand, this didn't get in the special permit, I, I, I thought that-- So, one of the things I'll just point out here, Denny, on this set too, is that there is this landscape plan--
Mm-hmm.
--that shows it really to the property line, and I think another--
So they're planning to plant it?
Lessing, you know, they're planning to plant it, yes, that's what this is, so these-- So this, this is-- They're gonna plant this, is that what's gonna happen? Right, so it's saying here that there are AC is service berry, so there's gonna be four there, four there, and then NS is--
Okay, no.
Whatever, cello tree is.
Well, I mean, going back.
Okay. But I think a lesson learned is the detail that we required at the entrance.
I think we should mention it, though.
We should probably require at a sensitive spot like that, see what I'm saying?
Should we ask to reprint the, would we ask this, this to be added to that, or that--
I don't think we can do that now, is what Alex is saying.
No, no, not now, not at the end.
But I mean, in the future, I think--
We had a, you know, we had a chance, we did that amendment in Pulte, and if there had been, if this had been brought up, we could have done it then.
Denny brought it up. It was one of our first meetings, I remember you bringing it up, and we did discuss it, but I don't know if we discussed the specifics of putting this in the plan set.
The developer came--
In the amendment?
Yeah, during the amendment discussion, we did this.
I don't, I, you know--
But it's not in the amendment.
If it didn't get in there, I, I, I just don't remember that.
Okay.
I don't recall the conclusion, I do remember you bringing it up.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I remember Mulligan having a issue, I just don't remember anything about a no-touch zone, I remember about the hundred-foot buffer, and saying that it's going to be, that it's going to be, the hundred-foot buffer includes the detention basin, and on the berm, it's going to be landscaped.
Yes.
That's what I remember.
That's what I recall too, I remember Denny bringing it up, I'm not sure it changed anything, but--
I don't remember this particular, this, the, the no-touch zone being brought up.
I think what is, what didn't happen is, if we, we should, in a sensitive area, make sure we get dimensions on the, the work zone.
Or we, or we flag items.
Yeah, in the special permit.
To make sure that they're adequately covered, I, I mean, I, uh, what can I say?
It's okay.
It, we would've had to discuss this, because obviously they weren't planning to do that. Uh, okay, what else do we have, Bill? We have, uh, what?
Should we make a note that Brian is no longer with us?
Yeah, we can make a note of that.
Brian first, no longer with us.
Thank you.
He's just not on the phone.
Okay.
What are you telling?
That's how rumors get started.
Oh, that's great, okay.
The only other thing that we've got here, isn't it, uh, our discussion of the overlay?
Okay.
Potential overlay.
And you're still here with us?
Twenty-four, three--
What?
Oh, there's another A and R, did we skip that?
What, A and R?
Three twenty-four, three twenty-eight, Adams Street.
That has been requested to continue to April twelfth.
Oh, God.
So, uh, the, we have a, we had a, a draft, a draft, uh--
So several RFPs, we sent out, uh, the RFPs and contracts.
It occurred to me, with respect to this over license, the underlying zoning, the business district zoning would allow a building much bigger than the Falcone building, um, and the only reason that, uh, they're not building it is because it needs to be all commercial, and because of the parking requirement, uh, that it might make sense not to consider an overlay, but to consider amendment of the business district zoning, since what we're talking about here is adding mixed-use development to the business district.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Can we require special permits in doing that? Because one of the things I like about requiring a special permit, it gives us opportunity to put conditions in review that you don't get with that underlying zoning right now.
You, you can indeed, you can make that a, a, a condition of the business district zoning.
I did send out, the Village Center--
Yes, thank you.
And there's a, um, on page seven, it talks about district special permit, but it's just some food for thought.
Yeah, that's--
The one thing, the one thing that, uh, addressing the East Milton Business District zoning and, and, you know, providing for mixed use, is that the overlay, you can create a different district, in other words, people have said, let's put the fruit center in the overlay, let's put the, uh, some of the residential district into the overlay, and whether you do that or not is, uh, it is something you decide, but, uh, the overlay can be different from the East Milton Business District.
Hmm.
And in fact, uh, the Falcones are going outside of the business district in, in what they're proposing, uh, they've got a couple of residential lots, uh, which is included in what they are talking about.
You also might want to point out that there's a number of properties that people might think are in the business district on Adams Street, for example, the property across from four seventy-five, I forget--
Blue Hills Bank?
Where the bank is, that's not in the business district, for example.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I doubt that the Art Center and the Post Office are in the business district, but the, the business, there's a number of properties like that, so, are, you're suggesting that those would not want to be in an overlay?
What I'm suggesting is that, when I say, we could look at the business district zoning and provide for mixed-use housing in it, and we can fix what is obviously a problem, because, uh, we hear loud and clear that people think that, uh, what the Falcones are, originally are proposing may be too large, and the, the zoning down there for the business district is, would allow something almost twice as big. The only thing the zoning doesn't allow is mixed use, um, and since the commercial market is, is a difficult market, um, and doing an all-commercial building, um, isn't something that people want to do, this happened at thirty-six Central Avenue. They did, they got permanent, an entirely commercial building, and then they said, we can't, it doesn't make sense, we can't, uh, we can't go forward on this, and that's when we provided for mixed-use housing, uh, mixed-use development, residential, commercial, in the Central Avenue area, so, uh, so that's just one thing to think about, uh, you know, whether or not the, the community wants the district rezone for mixed-use residential, commercial, uh, development is, you know, not entirely clear to me, uh, and before we embark on it, it would seem to me that we would, we want to get a pretty strong-- strong view from the neighborhood that this is what they want to do.
Yes.
I agree. I think we have to hear from the neighborhood what they want to do. I mean, I, I think that makes sense to me. It also makes sense to me to do an overlay. I'd rather, I think, hear from the Neighborhood Association on what their preferences would be, whether we do a broader overlay or we do just the business district. I wasn't getting the sense, though, that this was gonna spill over on the other side of the highway, but I could be wrong. I mean, I think perhaps we could use a little guidance. I think that this, I'm so glad you dug out this thing from the Smart Growth Toolkit, Lauren, the, the Village Center draft bylaw, because I think this gives us a lot to think about. I think we have a couple of good sample RFPs. What's our next step here? I mean, do we ask the Neighborhood Association to weigh in and what specifically they would like us to pursue? They've already asked us for help. They said an overlay. I don't know if they were thinking broader than the business district, if they were thinking including, inclusive of Blue Hills Bank and 475 Adams and, you know, the Post Office and some other properties on the other side of the highway. I don't know.
I think probably some people don't reckon, don't even realize what the boundaries of the district are.
Yeah.
Because until you delve into it and you look, I think it's not apparent. You know, one of the things that I mentioned at the last meeting was kind of a scoping session. One of the things that I came across in a RFP that someone had put out, it was not in Massachusetts, but this initial task of having planning staff do a scoping survey, which could be distributed to the Neighborhood Association and to the, I'm sure there's a Chamber of Commerce or Business Association in East Milton Square. I would give it to all of the retailers and property owners, and, and we could put forth, you know, questions that we'd want to ask them. And then that would, I think, help define how far. And with those questions, I think we would want to give them a, a map, you know, and maybe facilitate something at a, at a Neighborhood Association meeting. But it seems to me like Bill and Lauren could be up to that task, of that initial task. And then from there, we could decide what scope, you know, what we would want to do next.
Now, we decide, decided whether this process is going to inform the Falcone project process, or are these on separate, parallel tracks? Or do we, is that yet to be determined while we wait for the Neighborhood Association to sort of negotiate with the Falcones?
It, it seems to me that Falcones and the Neighborhood Association are talking to see if they can come to an agreement.
Okay. Until that happens, we're sort of...
If, if they can come to an agreement, and zoning is required, an overlay could be done, and it would, or it could be site-specific. I mean, it could be both, but I wouldn't be an overlay that simply said, "This is what we've agreed on for the Falcones. Everyone else can do, can do exactly the same thing."
Right, that correct.
It would be an overlay saying that this is what the Falcones can do, and other people can do something else.
Right.
Because I don't think that we're using the Falcones as a exemplar of development throughout the district.
Okay. I don't know. That's really, I'm waiting to hear from the Neighborhood Association whether they think so. But I think the reason why I asked that question is Cheryl handed out her memo. I think this came out today. Thank you. And you mentioned in it a ULI TAP. I do a lot of work with ULI, not as much in Massachusetts, but in other parts of the country. And I think a TAP might be a great resource for us, but these take a while.
Right.
I just did one in Ashland. They're my clients, and it took us nine months to even get it scheduled. So that's why I was asking. I think that could be an excellent resource. I just don't know if it's gonna be moving at the same rate as I think maybe everybody hopes the Falcone project advances, or at least comes to resolution anyways. But I think that's a great idea.
So one of the things that I think we, that...
And actually, can I just say what a TAP, so this is the Urban Land Institute. It's a global planning organization. They run these technical assistance panels. It's a nonprofit, profit group. And what they do is deploy a panel of experts into different jurisdictions to help resolve planning issues. So depending on what your issues are, they send in people with expertise in that subject area from multiple disciplines to kind of give you a broader scope of service than you could probably otherwise afford if you had to hire all these people on your own. And the, the experts that you get are all volunteers, and they do it as sort of a professional development opportunity, but it's a really neat model to get very inexpensive advice from people that we probably couldn't afford to hire independently.
And one of those actually was done in Milton and Central Ave, before my time on the board, but it did inform, I think, Alex, some of the work that was done after that, that the town did. There's, I think there's some opportunities to think about also, which, the, we've heard a lot of people, both here and, and I think the Board of Selectmen here and others, about parking and traffic and circulation issues. We've heard, we've had the Bike Advisory Committee, I know, come to the Master Plan Committee about improvements for bicycle connectivity, especially through East Milton Square. We know from the Saferidge to schools that people have challenges with walking children from East Milton to Calicut, for example, the safety issue. So I think there's some opportunities that aren't just purely how big a building you build, but how to make some other quality of life improvements to East Milton Square. And part of that, too, I think, is in the streetscape and wayfinding. And I think one of the things is that that's sort of your entrance into Milton from some places, and it's kind of a mess, depending upon how you arrive now. And so, I mean, that's outside of like zoning-specific things, but I do...
And it's planning.
It's planning, and I, I think it's a good opportunity there. And some of it might be shorter term and some of it might be longer term. How to implement public funds, for example, for the streetscape, but that was done successfully down at Central and on Elliott, right? So those funds could be sought for East Milton as well. Because a lot of people have talked about, "East Milton should be, feel like a village," and it doesn't feel like a village. Well, what makes it feel like a village? We did, I think, part of the master plan, we had those visual preference surveys, and people identified what would make it feel more like a village. Has to do with the architecture, has to do with the kind of signage and lighting and, you know, street, street furniture, et cetera. And where, even, you know, how people move about. So I think if we could do some planning in addition to thinking about the zoning, that probably would cover some of the issues. But these are the kinds of things that we could put out in a survey, you know, to residents and businesses.
Can I just make one follow-up point? I noticed you listened here. Mass Works Grants is one of the resources. I actually created that program when I worked for the state, and this is...
You know more than I do about it.
This is, I know. As much as there is, no. This is a, a state grant program for infrastructure to improve roads and other types of infrastructure. It could be very, very helpful in East Milton, but it requires a trigger project. So I say this only because if a project is approved for the Falcones, that's a significant trigger project. It has to require a significant amount of private investment in order for the state to make it a grant. So there could be an opportunity, if something like that or some other big project moves forward, to get some state resources for infrastructure. But you have to really be ready for it. So you have to know what you're asking for. You have to have data to back up why you're asking for it. The average state grant is 1.5 million. So, I mean, they, they give a lot of money, but it, it makes it more timely for us to start thinking a little bit more broadly than just strictly land use by block and more on impact for infrastructure based on what we have going on now, but what we may see if redevelopment happens on some of these parcels.
And one other thing that I forgot to actually put in here, but I've, I've talked about and may be implied in here, is in terms of examining other studies. We know that Mass DOT is doing some work on Granite Ave, and they have two separate projects. And they don't, I went to a meeting. Team A and Team B don't really talk to each other very well, or very much. And it's really up to us, you know, as a town, to kind of put the pieces together and link them together. So you could have a bike path that's coming along and stop, like it does on Blue Hills Parkway, where, you know, it presents a little safety problem. But anyway, to look at what the studies that are being done and sort of see where we can knit them together.
It seems to me that the survey is, is a pretty good idea because we need to know what the residents want out of new zoning. Do they want it just rezoned for mixed-use development because they want more development in the village? Or is there, do they want it done in a way that will provide more amendment? I mean, what is the, or is it all of these things?
Well, you know, the other interesting thing is I was, again, noticing in another, a different RFP, this sort of, at least it's some bit of market analysis, because a lot of people have said, you know, "We have a lot of nail salons or hair salons or certain kinds of service providers, but we don't have, you know, some other things that people might find desirable." But it, it might be that we don't have the right circumstances for those users, or do we need to actually have a, an outreach to those kind of use, you know, providers?
I bet Brian can help inform us on that as a retail developer.
So that's the sort of thing that would be useful, too. Because is there something that we need to think about with our zoning that would help attract some of it?
Brian will, Brian will be able to guide us.
Okay, now where are we, where are we going here?
So I think, I loved your suggestion on getting Lauren and Bill started on some sort of scoping survey, because I think that helps the neighborhood who's asked us for help, help them, right? I mean...
We have GIS can do some maps for us, right? Bill?
Go ahead.
Alan?
Yep.
Alan Bishop, right?
Yep.
And then maybe we can all put a list of questions, and maybe you could put out to the, to the business, is it the Chamber or the Neighborhood Association? Just also if they have any particular items that they know they want addressed. And then we can put those all together, review it before it all, before it goes out.
Is that done good to you, Alex?
I'm not sure. I, I got that.
Basically, if any of us have a suggestion of what would be the questions we would put out in the survey, send them to Lauren and Bill. And then Bill and Lauren will also ask that of the Neighborhood Association and the Chamber. So that, then with that list, they'll circulate that list, or maybe next week we could talk about the list of 10 or 15 questions.
I would, I, yeah, I, I just want to get a, it seems to me you have to determine what the project is.
Yeah.
I mean, an overlay is fine, but it has to be, there has to be a reason for the overlay. And is it just to produce mixed-use development in Milton, in East Milton Square? Or is it to see what East Milton Square needs to be a vibrant commercial district? Or is it to determine how East Milton Square can better live with its residential neighbors? Or is it maybe some of all of this?
I was gonna say, it's all of it, you know? And it's really, the question also then becomes, is it, is it limited right to the business district? I would almost think it's a buffer zone should be included, and, you know, and some of it includes the residential, and some of it includes the non-conforming.
That, of course, is a question, a question for the neighborhood, I think. Now, neighborhood, if you've been quite patient, do you have any, any marching orders for us? Come on up and, and tell us.
We have, we have four of us here tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging in.
This was a long night.
I heard something earlier from a person. I'm Jim, why don't we all come up first?
Come up and introduce yourselves and...
Several of our board members are working in a late at night, doing their jobs, so four of us, your name?
You got us.
Why don't you go ahead, Jessica?
Sure. I'm Jessica Costantino. I live on Belcher Circle, and I'm also on the board of the East Milton Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, I'm Jim Coyle. I live on, on Bunton Street, and I'm a member of the working group, and I'm in as well.
Jim Furley, I live on Belcher Circle, also a member of the working group.
Jerry Towger on Brockwell Avenue, and I'm also on the working group.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
The, the last meeting of, since Harvey and I were here, and I quite heard something very good tonight, it was good to hear the historical commission point of view. And the person who was here for that mentioned about the character of the size, you know, related to the master plan implementation. And I think, I liked hearing that. You know, that, that, maybe that should, could provide some definition of what an overlay might involve. And, and also our organization is, we're planning to have a, a neighborhood meeting soon. Broadcast it out and get it to everybody. Jessica's heading that one up, I think, so that we can, probably April 3rd right now is our tentative, and we can open to anybody. I think perhaps people from the town, maybe, maybe Bill Clark would like to be there, the board members here. Maybe let anybody listen, but it's, and as, when we started talking to the Falcone Company, it was all along we were gonna be, sort of an intermediary between them, and, but we are not the final decision makers by any means at all. The intent all along, and I'm sure Stephen Rhines has told you this before, is that we're more of a, 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 just, just, we were there listening and passed that along, and we get to the point where we have something more substantial to talk about, then we'd have a neighborhood meeting. So we have planned that for April 3rd right now. There's still some more coordination due to make sure that happens exactly then. But the idea is to get that input, and maybe this questionnaire you're talking about here tonight or something, that would be, hand them all out and get them all back, get people to fill them in there. You know, get people to, we'd like to hear a variety of opinions. What's gonna happen to East Milton? And the, the last meeting we were at, what I hear from, there's, on some, there's people, neighbors that I know that are on Mechanic Street, that they don't know if they're in the business district or what district they're in. So there's a lot of confusion on that. I tried to look at the map online, and it was confusing.
Actually, can I interrupt you? Bill, do you think you can print out a big map of the district so that they can see it for their April 3rd meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Then you can have it for everybody to see.
Thank you.
You know, we're, we're looking for ideas from Bill Clark, working with him and Lauren with this board, Board of Selectmen. I think we want to open it, get, make it a real community meeting. I think we're still, we haven't quite figured out, I haven't heard yet, a location yet. We're working on that. To, to, maybe it's an overlay, maybe it's, you know, a business district. It could be that, I think. But how do you, but the Falcones are looking to, they've already acquired some residential C property that they want to merge together. So the overlay, at least, probably will have some options in it to acquire immediately adjacent residential property. And maybe it's, it's a broader definition when it has a lot of options in it. That's something for this board to write. That's what you do. You know, to write something that's, that has options in it for expansion of this district. It may, you start with the business district, I guess, maybe it includes all of that, maybe it doesn't, you know? But it's up to this board to determine that. But how, and we're working with the planning department. So that, I'd like to see it all come together somehow and follow the master plan. I think Susan mentioned last time that the master plan has a mixed-use overlay district as one of the elements in it. Let's go do it.
Well, it suggests, it suggests that mixed use is a good thing to include in the business district.
But, but there are some major issues, you know, in the other two overlay districts. There, there's, there's open-spaced restrictions, under 30% in one, and I didn't quite understand, you know, and adjacency to residential, there's limits on setbacks, you know, there's a lot of things in here that the Falcone Company has not addressed yet, that we brought up to them, but it hasn't, we, we made some progress... That we brought up to them, but it hasn't, we, we made some progress, but there's still significant unresolved issues and parking is, is a big issue. You know, I think a lot of people, a lot of my neighbors have come to me. There's, there's restaurants, they look beautiful, they're, they're a nice addition to the neighborhood that have been created there. But the parking has been just, it hasn't been done well. I'll, I'll stop there. You know, that, we need a real parking study, and I think that's what came up at the last meeting here. They have a couple of consultants. I believe Bill and Lauren are already working on that to go out there. And maybe these people, whoever they are, it may be impossible to get them there for April 3rd, but it takes time to get somebody on board. But we need a good cross-checking of everybody. The commercial people and, what about the people that have a small business in there? We can't overlook them. They've been there a long time, some of them. Where do people park? If big restaurants come along and take up all the parking on the street, that a little, that a smaller businesses suffer. I don't know that, but we need their input. We need everybody's input, you know? And I think that's what we'll look them to do. Is that, Jessica?
Sure.
I talked to.
First, I'd like to just say thank you very much for taking on this with us as a community and also staying so late to do this. And I want to be respectful of your time tonight because I know you're at the end of a long day. So I think the community really wants to have a vibrant neighborhood that is reflective of the things that we want, which is a place to work, live, and play, and something that is gonna be forward-facing, right? We know that there's gonna be demographic shifts, we know that the community will look different, we know that there will be changes that should be coming to our community. And we want to take those as opportunities where we can. So we want to make sure that we're part of the discussion now so that we frame what that looks like. I love the idea of having the Urban Land Institute come. That's such a great idea.
That was actually Cheryl's idea.
Cheryl's wonderful idea. We had actually suggested that back to the Falcones when we first started the discussion, so I love that. Having a scoping survey is terrific. Anything that you can do to help us engage with, in, and a dialogue with not just the people who have come to the table, because we're pretty sure that we've missed quite a few people. So far, we've had three community meetings, 200 people approximately at each. But that, that's only, you know, 200 times three. We know there's a lot of other people in the neighborhood. So the other thing is that East Milton Square is a part of the whole town. And we want to make sure that it's reflective of a place that the town embraces as a nice place for us to all go to and live in. So in terms of going forward, I know that Bill mentioned that an RFP was issued. Has that already been, has there been action on it? What, just, other than it's been issued?
Not issued.
It hasn't been issued.
Hasn't been issued.
Just samples.
Looking at samples of RFPs to come up with a consensus among the board and hopefully among the neighborhood of what kind of RFP we'd like to create so we attract the right talent.
Okay.
So we're, we're just starting.
Just starting.
Just starting.
The scope, the scoping survey and it would be to get input from as many people as possible, as you say, about what the RFP should contain. So what kind of things do we want the consultant to help us with?
So are you gonna do an RFI first and then an RFP? Or just go straight to a scoping survey?
I think just, well, what I suggested, which I think this board seems to support a few, all think it's also would help get the information. You know, there's, we have some samples, right? So we've, can go through the samples and say, okay, other communities have done these things. And here's some things that came out of the master plan. But because you've been in conversations with one another, with business owners and with the Falcones, you know, let's get your ideas about what the scope of work should be in the RFP. And then it'll get written tailored to, to that specific area and need.
So that's terrific. The one thing I would say is to make certain that we expand beyond the group that's already been participating in the conversations to be as inclusive as possible. And so that may not, I know that you had asked for, I think you had said, maybe get information back from the Chamber and from the neighbors to start this discussion next week. But I really think it needs to be a much broader conversation and that's probably gonna take more time.
Yeah, I think we could, in the past, we've been doing some work in Milton Village. And we did a, what's it called, Monkey Survey, Survey Monkey?
Survey Monkey.
That got quite a bit of response.
Yeah, but again, you, you've, you will narrow your, your survey results because you won't get to people who don't have email access, who are not comfortable with completing online surveys, who are not around. I mean, I just would encourage you, this is a really important discussion for people and to rush it for a week to get survey results and data, that's not.
We're not gonna rush it.
What we, I think, would like to do is have something for you to distribute at your April 3rd meeting. Because not, something that can fill out there and just leave at the end and get an idea of what those 200 people, what they're thinking.
To be clear, my suggestion also is that the scope of work of the consultant would include two or three visioning sessions in which there would be broad input sought. When we worked on the master plan, we had focus groups and visioning sessions. And it was like two-year process. I'd hope it wouldn't take that long because there's pending, I think, I understand there's some pending properties besides the Falcones. But the, this initial idea is just to get an idea of what, what should be studied, not, not about all of the detail. That would come out of the process itself with the consultant.
Terrific. Thank you. The other thing is, someone had asked if people in general think that the other side of the highway is part of the square, and I think in general we do. I'm speaking for myself, but in general, when we talk to folks, it's on both sides. And people come to the meetings are from both sides of the highway. So I think we think of ourselves on both sides.
So I think that was actually my comment. And I wasn't really meaning was that considered East Milton? But is that, were you expecting the overlay to go over to the other side?
I think so, yeah, because there are those businesses on the other side. I think we'd like to see a holistic response to what appears to be very individualized attempts at piecemeal zoning, planning, and maybe lack thereof.
Right, and very clearly whatever happens there affects the abiding residential communities on both sides of the highway.
Right.
And you can see that when the Milton Arts Center was proposed and used for a firehouse, everybody from that side of the highway came out. And I hear from my neighbors, I mean, people don't feel safe walking to the post office. Something as simple as that.
Can see why.
You know, so there's aspects there, but, and even the walkability score, if that increases, that increases the value of the property. I mean, I was doing a project in Edelboro, and they went ahead and fixed all the streetlights, did major improvements, got state grants done before all the properties were. And then that, that was an enticement for developers to come in and improve old properties.
Was it around the train?
Yes. It was, what was it? Transit-oriented, there was somewhere for that, within a certain distance. And they got, got a lot of state grants there, you know? And it's been done, and even Chelsea did some work with the Urban Land Institute. I was involved in a project there about 10, 12 years ago. And it's changed that whole, Chelsea has changed tremendously in the last 15 years. And they worked with the Urban Land Institute to do that. So, so I would encourage you to continue to get whatever help you can from them.
Is it fair to say that if you're not just looking to, let's see how we can put mixed-use development into the district, you're looking to do something significantly bigger than that? You want to see, you want to develop zoning which will sort of control much more than just the buildings, but the traffic, the parking, the you want, you want, you want zoning to, you want a new kind of zoning which gives what you hope for as a better result.
Yeah, and the master plan, I think Susan said it the last time, there's four instances in there of parking, or four different ways of doing parking. Well, let's do some of them, maybe two out of the four there. But I think we're looking for this board and Board of Selectmen to help with that. And I almost like to see, you know, we need to slow down on approving new projects there until the parking problem is solved and the deck problem is solved here. I think we'd like to see, you know, they're all related, you know? And, you know, the Falcone Traffic Study, I think I said that the last time, was good insight into the, take the two, the one from the deck, the traffic report for that, the one from the Falcone, and do some surrounding parking studies. And you got a whole, and then you got all of East Milton, definitely both sides of the highway. There's a lot of issues with narrow streets. Other places have run into this problem before, you know? And they've found ways of solving it, you know? I don't know what all the technical words are, but the planning department can, and this board can handle all that, you know? And, and let's implement the master plan. There's a lot of good things in there. I think this board was the, they keep people behind it.
Well, the master, the master plan said it identified areas that really deserve to be given further study. And certainly, it didn't say that here's a plan, go out and build it. It said, look at this carefully and, and consider it carefully because it might be of benefit to your community.
And I think as Cheryl said earlier, you, you did get feedback during the master plan development. Everybody always wishes for more, but here's an opportunity for more feedback that's very local, East Milton Square there, you know? I just, if I, a couple of people on our, if you go to Quincy to go shopping and try to get back to past the highway, it's not easy. You know, that needs to improve. And that's one of the things, that connectivity between the two sides of the highway is one of the elements in here. Well, we're still waiting for something to happen on that, you know? And, and I think this, a grander traffic study that's more all-inclusive of all of those aspects, that people in, live in, 85% of Milton that's on the other side of the highway want to get, be able to get back there. And it'll help the businesses in the, in East Milton by having better the, the connectivity on that. And that's what, that's in here anyway, so it's another thing to do. It's a good, it's a good list.
It's really helpful for us because we, you know, I don't live in that neighborhood. So when I'm looking at it, I say, oh, maybe they think of it just here or there. Or maybe they don't want the neighborhood to necessarily merge with the district. But what I'm hearing is that the neighborhood is interested in a mixed-use, neighborhood-friendly zoning area, almost. So it's a very, it's a, they want to interact with it, they want it to be almost part. But do you want it to be able to expand into the neighborhood? Because that's very different than.
I would say very unlikely. I mean, but if, but if you took like just a buffer zone, if you looked at an overlay district, then I'm not even sure how all that works. But if you looked and said, okay, so, you know, if you're contiguous to the business district and there were certain parameters that, that would come into play. But I think in general, we're looking for a fabric for community, for interaction, for pedestrian access, for bicycle access, to, you know, not scare off developers, but to bring in people who might give amenities, like somebody mentioned earlier. You know, so we've got a nail salon or we've got a hair cutting place, but maybe we're looking for maybe a coed gym, maybe where men could go. You know, just amenities that, that a community would feel good, you know? Like the fruit center is, is a good, is a good thing for us. A place to eat is a good thing for us. You know, traffic and parking is a tough issue for us. But there could be other amenities that we could try to attract. And then the only other issue, so that we can all get some sleep tonight, vis a vis the Falcones and whether this is bifurcated or whether you go forward with, in two tracks with an overlay district, I think we have to look at some more holistic approach and, and outcome because we're gonna keep getting faced with Falcones or the, or the next Falcones who come through with their projects. And in the meantime, the Falcones are here, right? They're before all the boards and, and the neighborhood groups, you know? And, you know, everybody has been actually great on, on our side and you guys have been great too. But time and time and time again, it's not a great process. Everybody would agree. So I don't think it's fair to developers to come in and buy a pig and a poke and hope for the best and come and cajole and threaten and, and, you know, calm down. And, and you don't know what half a loaf, you know, developers are looking for at the end of the day. That's not a healthy process to me. You know, people should know within some reason what they're gonna get when they come in. We should welcome development that we all agree as a community is gonna be beneficial to our town. I think that's where we want to end up.
I just had one question from last time that I think it was Cheryl or Bill mentioned it about, there's money for Adams, you know, when you come from Quincy line to the square. Was there rehab money available from the state or something to fix Adams?
Well, we were, I think referring to, Bill and I, to traffic analysis that's being done. So they were doing some traffic counts all along Adams. And then with the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been working with MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, in asking them to analyze Milton Village. So while they're doing that, we've asked them to include all of Adams Street. And then I think the other thing that we suggested was that there, there are funds in a line item for master plan implementation that could be targeted to this work, whether it's targeted to traffic or planning or another kind of consultant. With the, those funds have to be approved both by the planning board and the Board of Selectmen in terms of what they're used for. But they would definitely be in any of the things that are part of the implementation of the master plan. So it could be traffic analysis, you know, it could be parking analysis, it could be planning, it could be zoning.
Right. Let's have some possible questions for a survey to be distributed at your April 3rd meeting. We're going to want them as soon as possible so we can get them over to you. And you should think the same about questions you might want to ask the people who are there.
Okay, if I could just add one additional comment though, that there is a tendency, I think, to think about the East Milton Business District. And if you don't live in East Milton, to underestimate the extent of the residential communities that are abut, which are very substantial. And I think whatever development does go on, and we are not opposed to some development, but I think it needs also to be respectful of the residential communities and how that development impacts those residential communities.
I can make one final comment. Denny, you had mentioned, were we all at a place of liking mixed use with a residential and a business district all combined? And I think what I've heard from my neighbors is that there is an expectation that the business district is the business district. And so really, the map will be helpful so that folks can know where the business district actually is so that expectation is clear for people. And, but having a plan so that we have this holistic approach going forward so that we as residents know what could be expected either in the residential district or in the business district. Because I think that's where we're, we're getting some confusion. We don't really know where it is and what we can expect and what we could expect going forward. And, you know, we, we picked to live there intentionally for a whole lot of reasons, including the wonderful businesses and the community that is there. So we want to have improvements. We don't want to have, we're not necessarily going with trying to control. We don't want to have, we're not necessarily going with trying to control, I think controlling outcomes is not necessarily where we're going. We want to have the improvements that people are really hoping for, for the community at large.
One of the things I might ask you folks to think about is, I know in the master plan, one of the consultants had suggested thinking about a buffer zone that might be a home business, you know? Like maybe it's an accountant's office, or something like that, as a, so you go from the business district to that kind of a buffer, then you get into the purely residential. I know now there's some, we've heard about some conflict where you have residential right across from restaurant, for example, because that's kind of a bigger difference in the kind of intensity of use. So maybe you think about that as you think about the boundaries.
Okay. Will do. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. We know it's a lot to come out and stay all night like this.
I think you were in my class many, many years ago.
Many, many years.
Alex, are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
And be debated. Yes.
Second.
Bye. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Bye.
I helped swimming for 495 on the street.
Oh, thank you. Oh, goodness, I'm tired. This was the funniest meeting. Those were the funniest moments. Oh, has it down? I know. That was so funny.